Whenever you're ready. All right, welcome everyone to the February, February 3rd, 2015 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Ms. Henson, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Tapke.
Here. Do we all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Ms. Wilson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We do have several additions to the agenda. On the table tonight, you will find an item labeled 8A1. That is just an additional piece of information for an existing agenda item. However, you will also find 8F3, 8F4, 8F5, and 8F6, which are requested to be added to the agenda under General Business Administration.
Four, five, six. Okay. Any other from council at all? Or entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So, Whiting. I'll move the agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Mokel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four, consent business. Anything to remove and/or add to consent this evening? Councilor Whiting.
Oh, 4E2, please. Remove.
Remove, okay. 4E2. Councilor Lehman.
4F5.
4E2 and 4F5. Anything else?
And, is there anything to add on? Is there anybody to speak on?
The new ones that got added, or?
The interim attorney?
Um, I'd like to discuss that one.
Okay.
What about 8F3?
8F3, let's just leave the new ones off, yeah, off of consent for now.
F2? Oh, no, wrong one. Never mind.
Okay. All right, so we have remove. 4E2 and 4F5. Councilor Lehman.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Luce.
And I'll abstain from F3.
And Councilor Mokel will be abstaining from F3. All right. Ms. Wilson, could you please read the consent business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 4B1 adopts resolution number 7547, accepting the donation of a stalker laser radar from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety's Towards Zero Deaths program. 4B2 adopts resolution number 7545, accepting the donation of $14,367 from Fairmont San Troll for use by the Fire Department for equipment acquisition. 4B3 declares three forfeited vehicles as surplus property and authorizes proper sale or disposal of these vehicles. 4E1 authorizes the replacement of the outfield lighting and towers at Joe Schlepper Stadium in an amount not to exceed $310,800 to be paid from the park asset fund. 4E2 was removed from consent. 4F1 approves the payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $4,383,299.76. 4F2 approves the minutes of the January 20th, 2015 city council meeting. 4F3 approves the application and grants a massage therapist license to Crystal Williams Eye Zen Spa, 1667 Seventeenth Avenue, number 107. 4F4 authorizes appropriate city staff to enter into a new three-year Microsoft licensed service agreement through SHI and authorizes payment of the first year's cost in an amount not to exceed $56,500 to be paid for from the IT fund. And 4F5 was removed from consent.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, noting 4F3, the application and grant a massage therapist license to Crystal Williams, was Councilor Mokel abstained on that item. So, passes unanimously. Other than that note, item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. This is a time where anyone can come up and chat with us for maximum of five minutes. I know we've got a person in the audience tonight would like to discuss an item with us, so come on up. There's a notepad. You need to write your name and address on there and state your name and address for the record. So, you're on.
My name is Jeff Hohenstein. I am here because I recently filled out an application to the city to become a pawnbroker to receive a license. And on this application, I made an error when it asked me if I've ever been convicted of a crime. And I wrote no there and gave consent to look at my background. And the only thing I can think of is that I maybe linked it in with 10 years with my residence. I have, it was an honest mistake. I tried pleading with Lori and I even left a, you know, message for the mayor because it really was more of a formality for me to go through this. And once I had it notarized, I understand the process that, um, that everything in there was... I just, I blew through this thing and should've took my time and was asking for, to fill out the application based on just get what really is on my record, which I was told by the sergeant that it wasn't my record that was the problem. It was that I wrote, you know, it really was just an honest mistake and this is my last chance, so I thought I would give it a whirl, so. And Doug is the guy who runs the pawn shop and is just here to vouch.
Good evening, everybody.
Um, I'm here to vouch for Jeff.
Doug, you have to sign in and state your name and address and all that fun stuff, too. Perfect, name and address then?
Uh, my...
Thank you.
Name's Doug English. I live at 2865 Faulkner Drive in Shaska. I, I manage the pawn shop here in Shakopee where Jeff applied. I've been working there for eight and a half years. And the reason I'm here to vouch for Jeff is because i- it's hard for us to find people there that are, that are reliable and trustworthy. And I think Jeff did make it an honest mistake. It is my understanding that the license application is not only to protect the city, but the business as well. I, I would actually like for us to use our discretion as a business to be able to hire Jeff because we actually need him there. He's a friend of mine and I know he's somebody we can trust, so that's, that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson, could you give a little more detail as to what's going on?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The city does require that employees of licensed pawn shops be licensed individually and have a background check as an employee. And as Mr. Hohenstein stated, he completed an application. He referenced it as being more of a formality, and I guess I would disagree with that. We take these background checks very seriously and, and don't consider them just a formality, but we, you know, run every single one and look at the results. The question on the application asks, um, have you ever been convicted of any crime or violation of any ordinance other than traffic? And you're given the option of yes or no. Mr. Hohenstein checked no. Right above his signature on the application, which is notarized, it says, "I understand that falsification of answers on this application will result in denial of the application." And so that is the step that staff has taken, is to deny the application. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, to the best of my knowledge. I know Chief Tate and Ms. Henson are most knowledgeable about this process.
Councilor Whiting.
Can Mr. Hohenstein reapply?
Councilmember Whiting, we have discussed that. However, I know that Captain, or Chief Tate and myself, we've had other applicants that have applied and have been honest in that question on the application and have been approved. And we don't want to set a precedence. We understand that people can make changes in their lives and, and such, but it's kind of clear on the application what is required. And the code does not say anything. I talked to our, the city attorney about it and there is nothing specifically in our code that says after a certain period of time, they could reapply. But it does clearly state that if there is any falsehood in the application, it is grounds for denial, so.
Councilor Lehman.
Mayor, two questions. This is an existing business, correct?
Correct, yep.
And this person was applying for an employment position?
Yes.
Okay, so I understand that.
Yep.
And then, I guess my second question would be, um, for council, do we want to, or not, have staff take a look at that policy in putting a timeline in there of some sort? And maybe the recommendation is to not do that, but just to have them look at it. I don't know what the recommendation might be. It might be a year or whatever. It might be no change. But do we want them to look at that, or do we like to just leave it as is?
If I could just ask a clarifying question, are you talking about having a timeline that says someone denied an application may reapply in one year? Okay. That, if the council wishes to...
One other question. Does everybody working for you have to fill out this form and be a pawnbroker?
Yes, yep. Yeah, correct.
And I did talk to the chief about this, just so everybody knows. And I got, I got a call from Mr. Hohenstein. And the chief and I spoke about it, and I let the chief spoke with Mr. Hohenstein for a while. And the chief was, uh, I tried to get him to change his mind, but he was fairly adamant that this was, this was the right way to go. And I trust his judgment that it's the right way to go. I know it's not the answer that you'd want to hear, but I, I tend to trust what the chief says as often as humanly possible. So, I, I would not be in favor of re-looking at it. If there's a timeframe where we'd want to have things come back up, we can definitely talk to the chief about that and see where to go. Councilor Lehman?
Well, I'm not in favor of going against our policy tonight either. You know, we've, we've got a policy. The form is pretty self straightforward, you know. So, I'm not, I'm not willing to overturn that policy tonight. My question was for council, do we want to look at, have staff look at putting a timeline into the policy or not? If we don't, that's fine, but if we do, we need to give them that direction.
Councilor Mokel?
I, I think it's kind of the same point, is that if we don't have a timeline in there, I think that it's important that we take care of that. If it's never, it's never, but not just make a policy. And I also agree with, with chief. It's, you know, you have processes that we go through, but I think that that timeline is missing.
So, anybody have a problem with looking at adding a timeline to this? Anyone have a concern?
Nope.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I don't, I don't, I don't know if, if, if it's adding a timeline. I think it's, I'm more along the lines of just having them look at it and see if we should or not.
That's what I meant, yes.
Okay.
So, there, there is no timeline that says you can or cannot reapply, then? Is that right now, so it's kind of a gray area? Is that...
Correct.
Understanding?
And we'll work on correcting.
So, obviously, if you were to reapply, then you guys would, it would just be an automatic denial right away, is what you're saying. But there is, since there is no, nothing in there that says you can or cannot reapply. Yeah, I mean, I guess it's, you know, it, I mean, I understand that the process there, but he, Jeff was totally aware that it was, that it was for a background check and it was a mixed up question. You know, I think he mixed it up with the residence and thought it was in the last 10 years. I was aware of his record. I know he had some stuff on there, but I knew it was nothing that was going to interfere with him getting a job there, which is usually, anything that has to do with theft or fraud is usually what would prevent you from getting a pawnbroker license. So, I guess the only thing we're asking is, you know, as, if we can hire Jeff out of, out of the discretion of the business and know that he's a trustworthy person to work there. That's, that's it. I understand the precedent thing, but, yeah.
Councilor Whiting?
No. Mr. English, typically, we don't act on anything that comes before us tonight.
Okay.
We will bring it back for discussion. In my view, you know, I think it, it should be up to the, the owner to, if you trust a person, that's, that shows that, you know, you're giving trust to an employee that you feel is going to work for you in, in your best interest. So, that says a lot. Coming before us tonight, Mr. Hohenstein, I think it says a lot that you honestly felt you made a mistake. So, I appreciate that and I, I think that, that's something we should look at. And unfortunately, we can't do anything with it tonight.
Yep.
But I think we will, so.
Councilor Lehman, then we'll move on.
Yeah, I'm not a lawyer by any stretch, but you can ask your own attorney. But if you're going to hire this individual, I would suspect that you'd be in violation of this current city ordinance.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that. That's, that's why we're here, right? Yeah, I mean, he... This is just for you guys to take a look at me and see, just judge my character. It's really, I have a full-time job. This is to help out with my second child. That's all it is. I screwed up on the application. It is what it is. I just came. Really nothing more to it. I screwed up on the application. I'm sorry. Very sorry.
Well, thank you for being here and chatting with us. We'll see what we can do for, if, what we can do for the reapplication time, if that makes sense, then we'll go from there. All right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you guys for having us. Thank you.
Anyone else have item they'd like to address in the recognition of involved citizens piece of the evening? All right, we'll move on. Item number 6A, 2015 Street Reconstruction Project, project number 20, 2015 dash 1. Entertainer motion to open public hearing. Councilor Lehman.
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Whiting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the public hearing for the 2015 Street Reconstruction Project. The streets proposed in this year's project area include St. Mark's Road, Seventh Avenue from St. Mark's to Apgar Street, Shumway from Sixth to Tenth, and Market Street from Seventh to Eleventh. St. Mark's Road was constructed in 1972. The remaining streets in the project area were constructed between 1959 and 1963. Residents in the project area are experiencing problems with their sanitary sewer. We did receive a petition from a majority of the residents on Market Street to include Market in last year's recon. We did push it back to this year. Market Street between Seventh and Tenth is a state aid road. We're proposing to reconstruct that to a nine-ton design at a width of 41 feet. St. Mark's Road is proposed to be reconstructed to its current width of 31 feet. The remaining streets in the project area are proposed to be reconstructed to a width of 37 feet. The current streets are 45 feet wide. Reducing the street width has a number of benefits, including reduced stormwater runoff, increased green space, lower maintenance costs, lower construction costs, reduced speeds through residential neighborhood. It allows us some flexibility to adjust street grades and fix drainage problems. There's less impact to boulevard trees. And a 37-foot wide roadway still allows for parking on both sides of the street. Proposed, proposed storm sewer improvements. We don't have many storm sewer improvements in this year's project. It's mainly replacing existing catch basins. We are looking at adding a couple hundred feet of storm sewer on Shumway. We are proposing to replace all the water main in the project area and the services, as well as all the sanitary sewer mainline and the sewer services. There is an existing sidewalk on the north and south side of Seventh Avenue between St. Mark's Road and Pierce Street. We are proposing to put the sidewalk back in, reconstruct it. I did send out a letter to residents asking for some feedback. I only heard back from two residents. One preferred to see the sidewalk go. One preferred to see it stay. We are proposing to assess 30% of the street improvements on a per-lot basis. Corner lots with only one street being reconstructed would be considered a half a lot. Non-single-family residential units will be assessed a half a lot per unit. And it's proposed to assess the prison property on the west side of St. Mark's Road, two units. The remaining 70% of the street improvements and the oversizing costs associated with Market Street will be funded by the Capital Improvement Fund. The storm sewer improvements will be funded by the Storm Sewer Fund. Shakopee Public Utilities will fund the water main improvements. And the sanitary sewer improvements will be funded by the Sanitary Sewer Fund. Estimated costs, the estimated cost for assessments is $402,000. 906, uh, 986,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund, 241,000 from the Storm Sewer Fund, 588,000 from Shakopee Public Utilities, and 437,000 from the Sanitary Sewer Fund. So, we have a total estimated project cost of approximately 2.65 million. And that's an estimated assessment rate of $4,345.94 per unit. This is a council-initiated project that does require a supermajority vote to move forward. And I can take questions.
Questions from council. Councilor Lehman?
Does the sidewalk on Seventh going to the east continue?
It does not. It, uh, it just runs the one block between Pierce Street and St. Mark's Road. We do have sidewalk along Sixth Avenue. St. Mark's Road does not take a lot of traffic. So, you could, you could say that there's a connection there if you're walking down Seventh and you could walk down St. Mark's Road to get to the rest of the sidewalk system.
So, neither side of north or south of Seventh continues east?
No.
It's just a one-block sidewalk going nowhere?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, I was looking at the overview map of the project area and I counted about 10, roughly 10 blocks total?
Sounds about right, yep.
10 blocks for two and a half million dollars is getting expensive. Although, some of these are long blocks, so I just had to guess, you know? I suppose if I use these areas here, they're big blocks.
Say about 14, 14 blocks. We're looking at costs right in line with last year's project.
Okay. Last year's costs weren't too bad, actually.
No, I, I believe, I believe the assessments came in around $3,800 per lot.
Okay. Last question, Mayor. Does the property owners have the option to, uh, do their sewer service from the property line up to the foundation at the same time?
They do. There's been a lot of interest in that. We'll provide a list of local contractors that they can get quotes from. And then we'll see who gets the city job if they're willing to also quote that kind of work.
And then that cost is borne strictly by the property owner. It's not part of this project?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Any other questions? All right, this is, oh, Councilor Luce.
Would it be possible, being that a lot of these services are failing and the people probably can't afford to go from the connection to their house, could we put that on their taxes? Could we do an add-on? If it's necessary?
I think it's a legal question. Mr. Mayor and members of council, we could look into that. That might be a possibility, since this work is being done in construction, in connection with a public improvement project. It's not something we could get out on our own and do if we didn't have a public improvement project. But if the property owner consents, I think we can work with them on that. And if they prefer to have it included in their assessment, I think we can get that done.
Mayor, members of council, I do think it would have to be done by our contractor.
Yeah, yes. Oh, yes, it would have to be done.
I mean, you cannot have a private, another contractor doing the work and assess it. That gets very complicated and very difficult.
So, is it just that they let us know that they want to do this? Or how does that, is there action that we would need to take, or is it just...
And Jeff would probably know more, like last year's project and other projects. We've had a contractor go around and give group rates. They've gone around and, and actually gone pretty, pretty competitive bidding. And some, in last year's project, I think the contractor did do some services.
Yes.
Councilor Luce?
You know, I think the contractor that gets the bid would be more welcome to do that in a group rate, being he'd know he's getting paid through the city. He doesn't have to go to each individual property owner to get paid, then.
Mr. Mayor, there's nothing you need to do tonight on that if we decide to implement this. The assessment role will come back to you for approval and these amounts will be on it at that time, if that's what the homeowners prefer.
Okay. Councilor Lehman?
If we do do that, when the assessment role comes back and, and folks are going to have their private line done by our contractor, if that happens, can we flag that in the assessment so that we know why the standard price per lot is this, 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 and then one is higher, little asterisk says that they've received that service?
Yeah, we certainly can do that, Councilor Lehman and members of council. Another thing we would want is a waiver of assessment appeal, because we certainly don't want to add to the assessment and then have to fight it.
Right.
Obviously, we'd request that. And a right-of-entry form, because we're getting on private property. So, there are some complications with this. But I just want to point out, I don't know if we've heard from people asking for this or not. I don't know if we've heard that. We can ask and put it in there. We'll see.
There's a number of people that have asked about getting the work done. Maybe not about financing it through the project, but if this is a service that we want to offer, then we can put together some parameters and, and let the people know, is that something we want to do?
Councilor Whiting?
Would cured and place be an option for homeowners on these older systems?
It's an option.
Is it?
Given the fact that we're already in the area tearing everything up, it's, might be cheaper to just reconstruct the line completely.
All right. Councilor Lehman?
And repiping the line cured in place is not part of the project.
No, but from the home to the, the service.
Right, but it's not part of the project with the contractor that's doing it.
Oh, I see, yeah.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item this evening? All right, anyone? All right, thank you for those that were, came for this item. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Councilor Lehman?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Councilor Mokel?
One second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilor Lehman?
I'll offer resolution 7546, ordering a improvement in preparation of plans and specs for the 2015 Street Reconstruction Project, number 215-dash-1. I'll move its adoption and adding that staff will look into the sewer line extension issue that we asked.
Do we have a second? Second by Councilor Luce. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Appreciate you being here. All right, item number seven, business removed from consent agenda, 4E2. Councilor Whiting?
Uh, thank you. Uh, this is a, a item where not long ago, we approved, uh, the bids for Quarry Lake Park. And no sooner do we do that than it comes back and we're looking at a $50,000, uh, $40,000 bump up in the, the cost of that. So, I just have one or two questions about that. It, it mentions here that the cost of the, the larger building is prospective to be larger. And does that affect the cost of the architecture on that? And does that affect the cost of the architecture on that? So, let me see if I can understand this a little bit. The more we pay for a building, the more we gotta pay for the architecture, too?
Yes. Yes, they base it off of a certain percentage of the overall estimated cost of the building. Um, and that, so that amount could be less if we, we haven't gotten into the design of the building yet. If we go with a smaller building, that design cost will be less because they won't have as much time into it. So it's, this is a maximum not to exceed amount. And the reason why we're switching is based on our request for an architect, the, the switch and the architect.
Then also we added a smaller building in this discussion, the, the smaller picnic shelter type. Now, hasn't it been, other than I think Hubert Park, we've been building those on our own? As a city, the city staff or Public Works has been doing that. Would we need or use the architectural services if we're gonna be building it on our own?
We hadn't planned to build this one on our own.
We hadn't?
No. We planned on using a similar design as what we've built on our own, but in our Public Works time, this park was not on their, on their plan to do. They still are planning to do the shelter at Southbridge Community Park in two thousand and fifteen. So the timing for them to do two buildings in one year was, it's not conducive for them to do that. So we hadn't planned or talked with the Public Works staff about building the small one in this park.
Councilor Luce.
Could we hold off on the small building and put it in a 2016 project for Public Works? And then save the architecture money?
Yes, we could, that, that's up to the city council. Um, one point with that, though, is the basic plan of the park is what you, you approved for us to go to design with. Um, the large shelter, because we were supposed to look at that as a larger, fully enclosed building, that's gonna be beyond the estimated budget of the park, that would need to be funded from either further or future park dedication fees or other sources of funding. Then you're saying if we pulled off on both shelters, we would not have either shelter out there in this first construction phase. Which we could do, that is a decision that you have.
Which we don't need to make that decision tonight at all. Any other questions? Councilman Lehman.
Question I had was, uh, it talks about construction services. Um, it's my understanding we were basically getting the plans and specs put together and then we're gonna talk about, depending on what the costs come back as, as a phasing approach because it's gonna be more than what we have.
The construction services are not part of this amendment. The construction services were in the original agreement that we signed with WSB. And what those means is no matter what we build, they will provide the construction administration of the job, similar to how we built Southbridge Community Park.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? All right. Councilman Whiting.
I'll make a motion to, uh, let's see, approve the contract amendment with WSB and Associates Incorporated for the final design specifications and construction services for Quarry Lake Park in the amount not to exceed two fifty-three, four fifty.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Councilman Mokel. Discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, moving on to, uh, four F five. Councilman Lehman.
I took this off because one of the concerns I have with it is, we, we all know that there's a battle going on for transit money right now at the state house, so. My concern here is it's gonna move focus away from our needs on one sixty-nine, especially at, uh, thirteen and one-on-one, where the, uh, study is going on for adding a third lane. I suspect that third lane would be expensive if they've gotta do something with the bridge. And we've talked about the third lane for the, the bus, uh, transit dedicated and possibly a mid-pass lane, joint, joint lane. I'm just, I'm concerned that by doing this, we're basically saying that this is more of a priority than that. And to me, one sixty-nine's needs are, are my highest priority.
I definitely agree with you. One sixty-nine needs are our highest priority, but I don't think this says that one sixty-nine is a lesser priority on this. It just means that this is something that needs to be looked at as well.
So we can put in here that one sixty-nine is our highest priority?
Um, I don't think we need to, by any means, um, because we're, the as-one-sixty-nine study comes through, we'll absolutely be supporting that as well. But this is not putting any extra money, um, toward this project, um, and they're totally different pools of money as well, um, that work to, that, uh...
Well, MnDOT takes their large pool of money and divvies it up into different accounts, and this is a pretty expensive study. So it's gonna impact what gets done in other areas of the money chain, so.
This is the same, this is a companion study, basically, to what is going on for the Mankato to St. Paul rail line study, um, which one sixteen, it's currently a tier-one, uh, project. And so this would interface with that project. And so that's why it's important to get it up to a tier-one as well.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, I'm just, I'm kinda leery about this. We had a pretty big discussion at the one sixty-nine corridor coalition about this, too, and, and they've, they've got the same concerns, so.
I don't think you've had, you haven't had a discussion about this.
We did, actually. We did have a discussion about this because one of the folks from the south, down by Mankato, was at the meeting and, uh, he, his concern was that, being a tier-one, that it might drop off the radar altogether. Um, and his concern was to, to try to get the one sixty-nine corridor coalition to recommend that this, at least stay on somebody's radar and not just fall off the edge of the plate. So that, we did have that discussion. And they opted to not put the lead on that because they wanted to focus it on one sixty-nine.
Right. Councilman Whiting.
This is a piece, you know, they are fighting for transportation dollars and all throughout the state and I'm sure the whole country. But what, what this is, is that, that Twin Cities to Northfield section of it, which eventually is gonna help, you know, the economic development when roads start getting built up, built more up with more and more traffic. Uh, the idea is to hope that people can turn to some, some transit options. Uh, I, I'm sure that Rochester's taking a look at this, too, and saying, you know, eventually we can, you know, put our piece of the puzzle in here and get from Rochester to the Twin Cities through the same route. And so this is a bigger project that's gonna take ten, twenty, thirty years. But I think it's important to start putting these out there because if it's at tier-two, it's not gonna get any kind of, uh, look at it. At tier-one, at least it'll get studied, see what the feasibility of it is.
All right, any other discussion? Do we have a motion on the item? Councilman Whiting.
I'll move to authorize the mayor to sign the attached letters of support for the inner-city passenger rail service.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Councilman Mokel. Um, any discussion? As, as Councilor Luce, have you had, had they discussed this at any of the transit meetings that you've been at?
No.
Much? Um, okay.
From my, from my understanding, from a little bit of work that I did on it, um, this is just a rewording of the Dan Patch Line, which the legislature basically banned. Are you talking about?
Not basically, they banned.
Okay, so why are we going after it again?
Well, do you know why it was banned?
Not exactly.
Because any Dino lawmaker banned it so that they didn't have trains going through their backyards.
Well, I don't believe in trains for people, so.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to two with Councilors Lehman and Luce in dissent. All right, we're gonna move on to general business number, let's try and crank through these pretty quickly if we could. Eight A one, interim ordinance establishing a development moratorium on certain lands in western Shakopee.
Mr. Leek, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. On January twentieth, you gave us direction on three items. Uh, first was to initiate a conversation about annexation with Jackson Township. That first meeting, just for your information, is scheduled for the twelfth of February, so we are beginning that process. You also directed us to prepare an RFP for the study in the western area of the city as well as adjacent lands within Jackson Township. I do have a draft of that RFP, excuse me. And just for your information, that RFP contemplates that the study itself would be completed by August of this year. Presumably, there would be some recommendations about actions the council might take. So it may take a month or two for those actions to occur. But in any event, the RFP will contemplate that that study will be completed this year. Uh, the final action was to prepare an interim ordinance, and that's in front of you this evening. It's ordinance number nine hundred, uh, that proposes the moratorium. And you'll see on the second page, under section five, it does propose a one-year period, um, although it provides that, of course, the city council can repeal it sooner. The reason for that one-year period, um, is a suggestion by the city attorney. And basically, it's easier to lift a moratorium than it is to extend a moratorium should you need additional, uh, time for any of the items related to it. Also, part of the packet is a draft of the letter that went to the property owners in the proposed moratorium area that is within Shakopee, not including the area in Jackson Township. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
In talking to a few of the, uh, landowners out in the area, um, they did a good job of convincing me that we should shorten this timeframe. Mr. Thompson, could you explain to us what would happen if we went with a six or eight month? How that process would work if we shortened this down and if we needed it, we could always extend it?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What the statute says is you can adopt it for up to a year, uh, maximum. Then there is a provision to extend it. There's only three reasons you can extend it, and probably only one of those reasons would apply here, which is if you decide to make some changes to your comprehensive plan, you, if you need more time, uh, and even then you only get, I'm doing this record, I think it's a hundred and twenty additional days. And to do that, you have to have a public hearing to extend the moratorium. Uh, there's a lot more process involved. So it's possible, but it's, it's procedurally more, uh, difficult and it may turn out that we don't have a valid reason to extend it. So, uh, I, I mean, I, and I understand the angst, if that's the right word, when you see a year in there and people think it's gonna be in place and you, and you've got the, the letter from DA Horton, so I understand that. It's completely up to the council's discretion. If everything goes per schedule and we get the study back in August, you know, if the council needs another month to decide what to do, then we have to enact the regulations and they take, uh, public hearings and planning commission approval and, um, uh, my guess is the council will make a decision on what they want to do, probably in nine months. Uh, it may take another sixty to ninety days to implement those changes, though. And that is a valid basis for extending the, the moratorium, but it does require public hearing, publication notices. It's just, it's just, Mr. Leek put it exactly right. It's just a lot easier to repeal it, uh, than it is to extend it.
Um, and one of the big reasons why I would like to shorten this to whatever makes it is mostly just to keep it within the 2015, uh, calendar year. Um, because if we, if it extends, if the moratorium extends into 2016, um, what two different developers had talked to me about was that, um, they're very concerned about doing 2016 developments in this area if the moratorium were to last until after January one, uh, 2016. So if we went the full twelve months on the moratorium, that indicates to, to everyone that we're not gonna do work until 2017 in this area, was what their concern was in getting tenants and other people around. Um, so, but if we have a 2015 end date, so if we just went for ten or eleven months and kept it 2015, that makes 2016 very viable as a development schedule for people. So I would like to pull it down to ten or eleven months just so that we keep it within this year. Councilman Lehman.
Let me ask a couple of questions here to staff. Let's do a hypothetical here. We, we do it for a year, we're going through the process of figuring out what type of uses and we're gonna put out in this area, what the, uh, infrastructure might need to be. And during that process, and we figure the, the process will be done in a year, no later than a year, so that puts us at February fifth, let's say February fifth, 2016, process is done. But during that process, we're getting a pretty good idea of, you know, what our zoning is gonna be, what our uses are gonna be, what the infrastructure needs are gonna be, kind of some of the layout stuff. Wouldn't we share that with some of the developers that are currently holding lands within Shakopee in this area that have these concerns about the 2016 season? Uh, and then wouldn't, uh, the, the process ending in February still allow for development in 2016? You're really not gonna do construction in February, March, probably start in April, you know? So that's kinda how I'm thinking about it.
Councilor Lehman, members of the council, to the first question, um, actually, the request for proposal contemplates that, uh, it would include those that have an interest in the lands in the moratorium area. That includes the township, the individual property owners, and potentially even developers. And then in case of DR Horton, they, of course, are both a developer and a property owner. I'm not sure who the other developer is that the mayor referred to. So the study process contemplates that they would be a part of it. And what is beginning to form as initial conclusions from that study is information that would presumably be made available to them so that they could begin to outline what it is they're looking at as potential projects. And as I said, um, I think staff's position in recommending that we do the study was not to make the study longer, but rather to get something done that allows us to take some action at the city council level to make that property more, um, attractive for development to occur. Um, as some of you have noted, the developer that owns property here has owned it since about two thousand and five, two thousand and six, somewhere in that timeframe, and hasn't done anything. So our thought is that understanding the infrastructure a little better might be more attractive to them in terms of formulating their plans.
Councilman Lehman.
The last question. Uh, the last question was, uh, if the process is done in February of 2016, um, and they were part of the process, wouldn't they be able to bring forward developments in 2016? You know, roughly thawed out of the ground?
Councilor Lehman, members of the council, let me take that hypothetical. Assume that by the second meeting of February of 2016, you've accepted the study and you've lifted the moratorium. Um, they could make application. Let's assume that it's an application for rezoning because there's a change in the contemplated land use, as well as plating land that they want to do a specific project on. That's about a three-month process for them. So we're looking at them getting through that process by May and being able to begin to move in the construction season in 2016.
Okay. And that's if it takes the whole year to...
That's if it takes the whole year. And, um, as I said, staff is not interested in it taking a whole year, nor do I think you are.
Yeah, and I agree with everything you said, that the, it is, that the logistics and the absolute way it could move forward is if it's through February 2016, they could absolutely break ground in 2016.
Yep.
But getting development and tenants to commit to things is a lot easier if the moratorium were to be done in December of 2015, is all I'm saying. So just make it ten-month instead of twelve-month with Mr. Leek. Seems like that would fit in the timeline still, and we could still extend it two months if we needed to.
But, but Mayor, you can have it at twelve years as it's recommend, or twelve months as it's recommended and be done sooner anyway. So I, we can still try to shoot for that without changing anything. You know, we could shoot for six months and still leave it at a year and just be done earlier. Uh, we can drop it at any time when we're done. We gotta remember there's an opposite side to this. We might run into something that we haven't thought about that says, put the brakes on here, there's some problems here that we weren't recognizing, whether it's utilities or whatever, I don't know, making stuff up, that we might have to go out for to extend this. And if we have to do that, as the attorney says, we're gonna need some pretty concrete reasoning to do that. So I would, I would, I'm falling kinda in the middle. It's, I'd rather go for the year, shoot to get it done before that, and hope we don't have to extend it. But it's...
Councilman Whiting.
I think that's exactly what we're, we're looking at here. I, I don't, I wanna get this done as soon as we can so they can plan for the next construction season. I don't want to rush it. Uh, I would like to see that we keep DR Horton in, in, in the loop so they know what we're looking at and, um, uh, even invite them to come down for some of the discussions if we have those. So I see us, uh, moving it along as quickly as we can without rushing it and doing what's right for the community.
All right, do we have a motion? Councilman Mokel.
I'd like to make a motion offering to approve ordinance number nine hundred establishing a one-year moratorium on development on lands in western Shakopee. That will be the subject of a master land use study.
Do we have a second? Councilor Luce. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We're gonna go to, um, eight F, uh, sorry, eight F one now. Review of position... Review of position profile for city administrator, which one do you want to go to?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I have been notified that the individuals planning to present our community survey results of nine, item 9A, are unable to make it here this evening due to road conditions. So I'm going to suggest that we take F1 and move it into that 9A spot. I think it's a topic that's conducive to the workshop discussion setting.
Okay.
And if you would allow me to try to work us through F2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 fairly quickly here, then we can get on to that workshop discussion.
All right, 8F2 then. Appointment of interim finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council is aware, our current finance director will be leaving employment with the city shortly, and it was recommended that we look for an interim finance director in order to allow the new city administrator, once he or she is hired, to be part of the selection process for the permanent finance director. Therefore, after doing some research on the subject and talking to some groups, I am recommending that the city hire Jean McGann of AEM Financial Solutions, Inc., to serve as the city's interim finance director. Her services would be available from mid-February through September, which will get us through our adoption of our preliminary levy and certification of that to the county. That's one of the reasons why we're looking at mid-September. She would not become an employee of the city, rather this is a contractual relationship with the firm, and she would be the personnel of that firm assigned to us. Ms. McGann has significant experience as a finance director for several other suburban cities in the metropolitan area, and currently serves as a finance director for the city of New Hope through a similar contractual arrangement. We would have her on-site here at City Hall one day per week and available to us at any time, you know, by phone or email. It is a flat monthly rate, not a per-hour rate, so we're not looking at having to manage how many times we reach out to her with a question or a need or something like that. So the cost of the proposal is $10,933 per month for these services, and that can be accommodated within the existing budget for the finance department.
Questions? Motion? Councilor Luce?
I just find that amount very high if we're only getting a part-time person.
Right. Must be the liability.
If she's going to do two jobs, is she getting the same amount from New Hope or more? I mean, that's a pretty good salary.
Yeah.
The salary is going to the firm, and the firm is, you know, deciding how much they pay out to their employees versus what they use for overhead. It will also entitle us to contacts and advice from the overall firm, similar to the way Mr. Thompson is our city attorney, but we have the resources of Kennedy and Graven and the expertise of other members of Kennedy and Graven's staff available to us. This would be a similar setting. It is not an inexpensive way to go, but to some extent, we're in a bind, and we need short-term assistance here, and so we can, we do have the funds available to pay for it. I think it's our best option.
Councilor Lehman?
Did I read in here that we're going to keep our, extend our existing finance director till February, end of February?
That is an upcoming recommendation, yes.
Should I talk about that now, or should I wait until that's?
Wait.
Okay.
Councilor Whiting?
I'll move to authorize the appropriate officials to enter into the attached agreement with AEM Financial Solutions for an interim finance director services.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Councilor Mokel, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to 8F3.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a housekeeping item related to the, all these other items having to do with taking care of the city's finances in the coming months. Currently, the mayor and the finance director sign all of the physical paper checks that the city mails out to pay our bills, and it's advised that we continue to have two signatures. With Ms. McGann not being in the building on a regular basis, it's recommended that you authorize me, as the acting city administrator, to be the second physical signature on the checks. Ms. McGann would have access to make electronic transfers and manage our various funds and things. As the interim finance director, all of those things can be done remotely when not in the office, but this is something that needs to be done by someone who's here on a regular basis.
Councilor Mokel?
I'll offer resolution number 7548, a resolution designating Chris Wilson to authorize to perform certain bank transactions and move its adoption.
Do we have a second? Councilor Lehman?
Second, I'll speak to it.
Discussion.
I'm assuming that the company that we're contracting out with is bonded and insured and everything?
Yes, they are. AEM is a division of Abdo Eck and Myers, that's the initials. They are a well-known, respected financial firm. They do a lot of city audits. We use a different audit firm particularly here, but they are the firm that a lot of other metropolitan cities use for their audits, so fully insured and all of that.
All right, and I don't suppose Mayor putting, maybe putting the two of us on there as being able to take what draws is going to fly, is it?
Further discussion? All right, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. 8F4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilmember Lehman alluded to a moment ago, this item relates to an extension of the last date of employment for our current finance director and city clerk, Julie Linehan. Council, at the December 2nd meeting, had originally accepted a resignation with an effective date of January 30th, 2015, which would have been last Friday. Given all of the transitions that the city has been going through, Ms. Linehan was asked if she would be willing to stay a little bit longer to help us smooth out some of those transition. She has graciously agreed to stay through February 27th. This will give her approximately a two-week overlap with the interim finance director to ensure that the projects get handed off and questions get answered, and we're up and ready to go before her last date.
Councilor Lehman?
You know, I think, I think she answered my question.
Okay. You want to have a motion then?
Make a motion to authorize change in resignation date for finance director, city clerk Julie Linehan, from January 30th to February 27th, 2015.
Do we have a second? Councilor Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. 8F5.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the last of these sort of housekeeping items related to the finance director position, and in your recent actions, you've dealt with kind of the finance side of her duties. Ms. Linehan also serves as our official city clerk, which is a statutory position. After speaking with Mr. Thompson, he's advised that we name an acting city clerk during the interim, and therefore, I'm recommending that the council appoint deputy city clerk Lori Henson as the acting city clerk effective March 2nd, 2015, and authorize a corresponding pay increase from step D of grade five to step F of grade seven of the city's non-union pay plan.
Councilor Lehman?
I'll make a motion to appoint deputy city clerk Lori Hanson to the role of acting city clerk, effective March 2nd, 2015, with a corresponding pay increase, step D, grade five, step F, grade seven, non-union.
Councilor Mokel?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is, oh, sorry, discussion?
It was asked earlier if she was good at making cookies and her cakes or anything like that.
What the heck?
We'll ask that after we vote on it.
Sure, after. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations, Henson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council.
All right, 8F6.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is on a different subject, and that is the idea that's been floating about a little bit as to whether or not the council wishes to have a workshop in the coming month or so. And we discussed this when talking about the transition plan for the city, and I was directed to get more detail, including a proposal and a price estimate, and I have done that. In front of you is a proposal from Barbara Strandell. She was recommended to me by several other metro-area cities as someone that had worked effectively with their city council groups on a variety of projects. She is proposing a process where she meets one-on-one with each of you to ask a series of prepared questions and understand your positions and issues, and then conducts a two-hour workshop to try to bring that all together and things. The focus of this council workshop would be somewhat different than the ones that the Shakopee city councils have done in the past, in that the emphasis is not on what projects do we want to work on this year, but rather on how the council works as a group, how you resolve differences, what the expectations of one another and senior staff are for communications and commitments and so forth. The proposed price of the project is $3,515. Funding for that is available in the administration budget for this year. Two possible dates that this could be conducted would be Thursday, February 19th, or Thursday, February 26th. However, if council wishes to go forward and neither of those dates work, we can certainly find other dates.
Questions, thoughts? Councilor Lehman?
I'm in favor of it.
Councilor Whiting?
I'm in favor. Let's kill him.
Should we just do a motion?
No, we need a date.
Sure. 26 is better.
I'm not in the country.
Well, Mr. Mayor, perhaps maybe you should have the motion first to retain the consultant and get that through and then figure out a date.
Councilor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to direct staff to retain the consultant, Barbara Strandell, for a council workshop.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Senator Mokel, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so now we are, would you like to go to the city administrator advertisement now, is that where you want to go?
Mr. Mayor?
Mokel over there? Yes, sir.
Did we want to discuss the dates for this meeting?
Do you want to do that now, or you want to do that on email?
We, it would, recognizing that it would be after your next meeting, we can establish that, you know, by email communication, and we'll find a date that works for everybody.
Okay, perfect. Councilor Lehman?
Motion for eight-minute recess.
We're there?
Ten.
Yep.
Eight.
It was compromised.
Okay.
All right, we have
Second.
Motion, second for eight-minute recess, and we're going to move over to workshop session. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Passes unanimously.
When we get on to page four and then, you know, continuing to page five and six, this is where we've really tried to pull a lot of the information that was gathered in individual meetings with you. The memo talks about the process here of really being a synthesis of ideas. I'm trying to basically sit down with my notes, look at the ideas that are there, things that are being repeated, things that appear to be themes. So that's what you're, that's what you're seeing here. And I also want to share with you that while my memo says that this is primarily from council notes, it actually could be a little bit stronger than that. The way I developed this section was to work exclusively off of the notes that you had and then to go back and review the department head comments and some of the public comments and make sure that ideas were being represented. And sometimes there was an idea that would maybe build upon some of the things that you had talked about. So that's how I did it. I want you to feel confident that this is really drawn from the conversations with you. There was a lot of discussion from many of you in terms of getting to know the community, so much so that it seems to me it is a high priority issue. Somebody comes in and there are things that they need to do to get to know the community. Managing the transition, there was discussion about trust and credibility, types of communication that's going to come through, meeting people. And really, as I reflect on this, you're talking about things that occur in a transition. And sometimes it's helpful to acknowledge that, to lay it out there and set expectations for candidates that there is a piece of this that will be managing that transition.
Transition of what? Like what, what do you mean by transition?
Transition, okay. Transition in terms of the organization. You're making a significant change in the city administrator position, so staff leadership. You have other transitions that are going on too, as we heard discussion about your finance director position as well. So we, we could put organizational transition in there. I do think most of the folks who look at this will understand particularly from the description that it's really trying to help move people along, move them forward, and whatever that means. And I'm not here to define what moving forward means, but to say it's something that should occur. Growth and economic development was frequently discussed and the rapid growth. I was actually a little bit surprised by the statistic that appeared earlier on, that since 2000, your population had increased by basically 90%. I think it was 89.5%. So that's, that's a lot. And I wanted people to understand that there's been rapid growth because I think that's part of where you find yourself as an organization. How are you, how are you working with that? What are the ideas about how you respond to rapid growth? You're going to be growing, but not at that same clip that you had before. So we wanted to give a sense, there's been a lot of growth, but it's moderating. One of the things that frequently came up was annexation. And so without getting really specific into discussions, we did want to note that because it was a frequently mentioned item. And for some people, the downtown development came up too. And I think it was important, I don't have any place in here that you have a downtown. And I think that's one of the interesting pieces about Shakopee, that you, you have that downtown, you have that center to your community. So having that is a very important asset. I wanted to make sure we got that into the profile. Community amenities and services. There was some discussion about community amenities and services, and this is an area where I think it's ripe for discussion. It's something that's being formulated. It's an area where there, there isn't necessarily agreement on, on all things. So it seemed to me to at least frame it as an issue, let people know that you've been working with the community survey. Now, that community survey, I think is looking at amenities and services. If there's another aspect to it that would be better to describe that, that might be an area that we would want to work on. But it was to let them know, first of all, this is an area of discussion in the community. You have been getting information in a survey and it is an area where the city administrator can expect to be involved, essentially what we're saying. Organizational management. This really comes to the, the structure review that's going on that, that David is working on. And again, this is one of those where I, I know that the study is there, I think it's helpful to let people know. It's one of those items, a new administrator coming on board would have some great information to look at, but probably as part of a dialogue and continuing to look at what's the best for the city of Shakopee. So to make them aware, but not to conclude any ideas or direction. Building the team. There was discussion about some of the positions in which you've had turnover, notably the finance director position. As I talked with people, and this was something that came up in your discussions, but also in staff discussions, there is a recognition that there will be changes occurring in various departments as, as there are folks who are approaching retirement. So there really are opportunities here to build the team through not only the hiring that would occur, but also looking at succession planning and things that would develop employees and prepare opportunity, prepare employees for future opportunities. Collaborative partnerships. One of the things that I've, I've always known about the Scott County area is scale, which I think has been a, a great, a great model for people in, in communities who are interested in sharing services. Again, I think that's another thing that as people are aware of that and they know that you're an active participant and it's something that you support, looking at how you can work with others, what's in the best interest of the city. I think that that's a, a good, attractive issue to put out in, in this section. And, and I just basically described that it was there again in terms of an openness to exploring shared service arrangements. And of course...
You want to add under that collaborative partnerships, the relationship Shakopee, city Shakopee's had with the school district forever, you know? Where we share buildings and structures and playfields and...
Okay, so in parks and recreation, that's happening too?
Yep.
Yes.
I think it's like a first use agreement where if the, if the city has a building that the school wants, if the, if the city has a building that the school wants to use, we give them first use of it before we'll let somebody else use it. And they do the same for us with their facilities. You know, we, we help them take care of a lot of their baseball fields and stuff like that. And they try to design their schools with the intent of sharing them assets with our park and rec department. And likewise, we do things that takes in their needs into consideration too. So it's been a very good relationship over the years. I'd like to keep it that way.
It's definitely something that we can add. I, I think at the end of this section, it would be helpful, just first blush, do we seem to be addressing issues that you would regard as high priority issues? And have we laid them out in a way that gives people an idea of what they would be working on without being too prescriptive?
Anyone?
Along with the schools, Councilman Lehman mentioned, we may want to add in here, put in somewhere, maybe under collaborative partnerships with the Midwakuthin community. That, that's an aspect that we deal with at a staff level and would expect the city administrator to handle concerns with that.
And, and one question that I wondered too, I know that there are various lands that are held in trust within corporate limits by the tribe. And I don't, I don't know how much, that, that didn't really come up a lot, but I, I know it to be something that is again, a unique aspect. So if there are some other things there, but I can definitely add a, a sentence about that.
The only thing...
I'd keep that, I'd keep that issue that Mr. Whiting brings up as kind of generic. I mean, it's not bad to have that, that known by a potential applicant, but to get into the weeds of land trust issues and the, the fights and stuff, you know?
Just to point it out that it's a collaborative development.
In the first two sections, something that's the getting to know the community and managing the transition piece between those two, I don't know if it's in there or not, but it's in combination of those two, is that we're a community in transition as well. Like you said, with the 90% growth, there will be whoever the next city administrator, I think will be working with community leaders. And so it's, it's kind of in there, the sections, but on building community and being part of making people who are new to the community feel welcome and working with, with those pieces, that there's a tremendous amount of opportunity within that as well.
And diversity.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the diversity piece is a pretty, is a really good one to have in there with getting to know the community because we're between a third and a half non-white community, which brings a lot of different opportunities and, and issues along with that. So I think that's a piece that should be in there as well. So that's a very good catch. Anybody else?
I can definitely incorporate that.
I'm not sure these directions are accurate. Chanhassen to the west. Chanhassen's to the north.
Where are you looking?
Okay.
Shares a border with Chaska to the southwest. Chaska's to our northwest.
I better pull out a map, in other words. This is, this is something that I, I, I had someone else who was kind of working on this and I trusted the direction. I can go back and look at that. I don't want to be directionally challenged here.
You guys are going to look on a map to see where we're at? I can't find them.
I will, I will, I will pull out the, the map. I will make sure that gets corrected.
All right, anything else in this section? All right.
Okay. And then candidate profile. Candidates will frequently call and they will say, what are they looking for? This is really the attempt to answer that question.
finance director position. As I talked with people, and this was something that came up in your discussions, but also in staff discussions, there is a recognition that there will be changes occurring in various departments, as, as there are folks who are approaching retirement. So, there really are opportunities here to build the team through not only the hiring that would occur, but also looking at succession planning and things that would develop employees and prepare opportunity, prepare employees for future opportunities. Collaborative partnerships. One of the things that I've, I've always known about the Scott County area is scale, which I think has been a, a great, a great model for people and, and communities who are interested in sharing services. Again, I think that's another thing, that as people are aware of that, and they know that you're an active participant, and it's something that you support, looking at how you can work with others, what's in the best interest of the city. I think that that's a, a, a good, attractive issue to put out in, in this section. And, and I just basically described that it was there again, in terms of an openness to exploring shared service arrangements. And of course-
You want to add under that collaborative partnerships, the relationship Shakopee, city Shakopee's had with the school district forever, you know? Where we share buildings and structures and, and playfields and-
Okay, so in parks and recreation, that's happening too?
Yep.
Yes.
I think it's like a first use agreement, where if the, if the city has a building that the school wants, if the, the city has a building that the school wants to use, we give them first use of it before we'll let somebody else use it. And they do the same for us with their facilities. You know, we, we help them take care of a lot of their baseball fields and stuff like that. And they try to design their schools with the intent of sharing them assets with our park and rec department. And likewise, we do things that takes in their needs into consideration too. So, it's been a very good relationship over the years. And I'd like to keep it that way.
It's definitely something that we can add. I, I think at the end of this section, it would be helpful, just first blush, do we seem to be addressing issues that you would regard as high priority issues? And have we laid them out in a way that gives people an idea of what they would be working on without being too prescriptive?
Anyone?
Along with the schools, Councilor Lehman mentioned, we may want to add in here, put in somewhere, maybe under collaborative partnerships with the Midwaketen community. That, that's an aspect that we deal with at a staff level, and would expect the city administrator to handle concerns with that.
And, and one question that I wondered too, I know that there are various lands that are held in trust within corporate limits by the tribe. And I don't, I don't know how much that, that didn't really come up a lot, but I, I know it to be something that is again, a unique aspect. So, if there are some other things there, but I can definitely add a, a sentence about that.
The only thing-
I'd keep that, I'd keep that issue that Mr. Whiting brings up as kind of generic. I mean, it's not bad to have that, that known by a potential applicant, but to get into the weeds of land trust issues and the, the fights and stuff, you know, it's-
Just to point it out that it's a collaborative development.
Um, in the first two sections, something that's the getting to know the community and managing the transition piece between those two, I don't know if it's in there or not, but it's in combination of those two, is that we're a community in transition as well. Like you said, with the ninety percent growth, there will be, whoever the next city administrator, I think will be working with community leaders, and so it's, it's kind of in there, the sections. But on building community and being part of making people who are new to the community feel welcome and working with, with those pieces, that there's a tremendous amount of opportunity within that as well.
And diversity.
Mm-huh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the diversity piece is a pretty, is a really good one to have in there with getting to know the community, because we're between a third and a half non-white community, which brings a lot of different opportunities and, and issues along with that. So, I think that's a piece that should be in there as well. So, that's a very good catch. Anybody else?
I can definitely incorporate that.
I'm not sure these directions are accurate. Chatham to the west.
[laughing]
Chatham's to the north.
Where are you looking?
Okay.
Shares a border with Chaska to the southwest. Chaska's to our northwest.
I better pull out a map, in other words. This is, um, this is something that I, I, I had someone else who was kind of working on this, and I trusted the direction. I can go back and look at that. I don't want to be directionally challenged here.
Guys are going to look on a map to see where we're at. I can't find them.
Okay. I will, I will, I will pull out the, the map. I will make sure that gets corrected. Thank you.
All right, anything else in this section? All right.
Okay. And then candidate profile. Candidates will frequently call, and they will say, "What are they looking for?" This is really the attempt to answer that question. And so, you'll see here, the, the vibrant, forward-looking, energetic leader, strong personality, positive can-do attitude. So, I mean, hopefully, there's a sense of, of, of energy that that provides. This, this statement, the next one, was actually something that a staff member said. I loved it. And, and so, here, here it is. Appreciate Shakopee's history, and at the same time embraces its growth and potential. To me, it, it just, it, it, it felt like a very, very good statement. We wanted to look at building an effective working relationship with the city council, and, and things that can be done to earn trust and, and, and respect, and, and really kind of cement that working relationship. Having the information, and I think council members feeling engaged. Council members talked with me about, "We want to feel engaged." And I think there are differences, and, and some significant differences that you have had on issues. I would be hopeful that someone comes in with the idea, not of, not of directing you, but kind of helping to find where some of those common, common ground might be, or where there might be some opportunities and, and ideas that inform your discussion. So, I laid it out in that way, hopefully setting a good tone for you. Ethics is always important, transparency is important, so we've laid those items out. Setting an organizational tone, in some ways, this amplifies the leadership piece in the very first bullet. But again, it talks about things that came up in our discussions. To be proactive, to be open, to value customer service, value initiative, to look at continuous improvement, those are all parts of an organizational tone. Making, making sound decisions, making and communicating decisions in a timely manner. And that was something that came up in a number of, of different conversations. Empowering department directors to maximize their potential. There was a lot of discussion about delegation, that someone should come in and be able to do that delegation, to trust in the delegation. But, but that doesn't mean hands, that doesn't, that doesn't mean being removed from the results. It means to, to, to trust that, but to be there, it sort of goes with the, the next one of maintaining an awareness of the operations, and having that knowledge of when to get involved, when do they need to personally be there, whether it's a coaching, or it's a, it's a huge issue for all of you, that the administrator needs to be working on. Welcomes diversity and cultivates inclusivity. Seeking opportunities to be involved and active in the community. The, the welcoming diversity is, is one of the things that we talked about at the public meeting, that it just came out in a very strong way, that it was an attribute, a positive attribute for the community. So, it's listed here. And then communication was, was always important. Not only the notion of working and talking with very many different audiences, but, but also that to be clear and, and straightforward in the communications, make sure that, you know, people understand what you're saying, to have that kind of clarity. So, that's if someone calls and says, "What are they looking for?", I would guide them and amplify this discussion with them. So, again, the question to you, does it, does it look complete? Does it, does it, does it feel like it's a great description? Are there things that should be modified, added, pulled out? And again, you'll have time to think about this a little more.
Anything stand out to folks?
First blush, it looks pretty good.
Matt, Mike?
I'm reading the next page.
Okay. All right, so that must be great then, huh? All right, education and experience.
This is taken, the first part of this is taken fairly closely from the job description, which calls for a master's degree. It looks at subject areas. It said ten years, I think seven years is better, just to make sure that you get a good applicant pool. Then we looked at talking about four years of experience of department head level or manager in a smaller, similarly sized governmental environment. Equivalent combination of education and experience means that if somebody comes in, and let's say they've got ten years of experience as a city administrator, they have a bachelor's degree, they're, they're not going to be overlooked because they don't have the, the master's degree. And one of the things that you all told me was that experience was important. So, what I would basically be doing is, is, is weighing that, the way that this is written right now. And then, in order to talk a little bit about things that would be important for the candidate, I've just pulled out some, some things that are intended to reflect the earlier parts we've discussed, managing the dynamics of growth. And I don't mean solely economic development. I think growing communities have service issues, there can be financing issues. To me, it, it covers a broad area. Defining organizational roles and responsibilities. I think that there's always a need to make, make sure that there's clarity around those roles and, and responsibilities. Helping the governing body identify and establish shared priorities and, and future directions. And again, it is not making decisions, but it is to come forward and, and to, to help, to bring information that is, is helping you in those areas. The skill level that, that came out probably most frequently in discussions, and, and you'll see this too, I think in the survey, were the finance and budgeting skills. So, this is something that came up in all different areas. I think that's important enough to call it a must-have. Same with the excellent communications and interpersonal skills. So, that's the area.
I wonder if we want to add, if I may, any kind of knowledge in met council kind of development ideas would be helpful, or, because there's some dynamics there. I think we have that in the community development side. Do we need it on the city administrator's side? I guess putting it out there.
Quantify it and define it. Even the met council will know what they're doing.
Well, there you go. I'll agree with that.
And then I think you're limited, I think you're limiting yourself to in-state only.
Local pool, yeah, yeah.
I don't want to bank, I don't want this person to be weighed at all on their affiliation, good or bad with the met council.
Well, we have the dynamics on staff that can handle that, but it does come into play at different times, so.
Well, that's where their reasonable focus and ability to be open-minded and so on and so forth, looking at Shakopee's best interests comes into play.
And again, there are items, just kind of thinking as you raise questions, there may be areas that we can ask somebody about, about their involvement with, with, with regional matters. And, and if something like that, we might find in people who are outside the area as well as from people who are in this general area. So, as, as you bring up some comments, it might not be something we want to get into, into the profile, but we might be able to insert it someplace else in the process.
To me, I, you know, regional issues, I- Sorry, Mayor. For me, the regional issues, I kind of, I put heavily on Scott County, because they're four blocks away, and it's very convenient for us. And, and they're a bigger player in a larger area, and they probably have better expertise in some of them areas than, than the city does. Not that we don't work with them collaboratively on it, but, you know, I think it's pretty important that any city administrator, be it Shakopee or anywhere else, has that ability to work with their other jurisdictions of government, counties, state, deed, whatever, you know? And I think they get that experience through some of their department heads, and some of their counterparts from other cities or from the county or whatever. And I, and I think you already covered that, so I don't want to keep hitting the same thing over and over again.
The one comment, as you, as you were speaking, council member, we, we could just put something in here. It could be the growing community, it could be something about handling intergovernmental relations, or just that, that piece, because we wouldn't be-
Right.
Too specific, but it would say, hey, it's a part of the job. And there are a lot of people, I think, who like that kind of involvement as well.
Is that a relationship building, so like excellent communications, relationship building and interpersonal skills? Is that how that could be hit?
It, it could, it could be. We can try working something in there.
I like the intergovernmental part, because that comes up.
It covers it all. Whether it's tribal or-
Yeah.
Regional or met council or whatever.
It's a good add. I'll figure out how, how to incorporate that, but I think that would be a good place to, to put it in.
At this point in time, I'm pretty pleased with what you've got here. Glad to see, number of things that you and I talked about are in here. It's pretty, pretty right on the money at this point. I'm going to take some time, read it over, digest it.
I'm glad. I, I think that that's an important thing to do. Compensation and benefits, I, I do want to talk with you a little bit about that. Now, I said we'd go-
Can we put in there pro bono?
A little work.
Well, it depends on if you would like to get some candidates or not. One of the things, without getting, I don't want to get into too, too much detail here, but on the employee survey, we were trying to work with a good way to present this to you. I don't think I found it. But there are some tables where I think you can actually see responses a little bit better, and those occur on pages four. I think it's twelve and thirteen, and then nineteen. So, it gives you-
Where, I'm sorry, where are you at, Shannon?
On this employee survey. These, these bars, I, I haven't had this trouble printing something out before and having it look good, and I asked some other people to help me, I think it's all here, but what I found to be the easiest were the charts that appear on page four. I think it's twelve and thirteen.
Four is not a chart.
Four is a table? Four?
Can you go over your-
On page four?
Yep.
On four, what is, what is the one, two, and three portions of that?
People were asked, people were asked three questions. One is, what are the most important areas of professional experience and expertise for the next city administrator? We told them they could list up to three. And so, what this attempts to do is give you some sense of who has responded, one, which is green, two, which is sort of a teal color, and three, which is sort of orange. And, and I think what happens is that the, the relationship on these bars gets lost because you don't see the relationship on the graph until you're onto page three. So, it, it, it just, it, it doesn't work so well, in my opinion. If you look at page four, however, you will see a breakdown of the first, second, and third responses. You'll also see the total irrespective of how someone ranked it. So, for example, what's the most important professional experience and expertise? Well, I think there's a lot that's coming on internal communications. Total of thirty-four people rated this as either for a second or a third, of all the choices they could have made. Also high was organizational management. Twenty-eight people commented on that. And so, I think that this area becomes-
Is the number of people that commented that makes it important?
Yes. I would, I would, I would say that overall, we had fifty-six people who responded to this. And so, when you start to see these clusters, it's the same thing that when I'm, I'm working with you and I'm trying to understand, okay, here are important issues. Every single thing that you told me might not have made it into the profile, but definitely where we were starting to get, you know, overlap or dimension on issues, that's what made it in. So, that's how I tend to look at it.
Okay. And the fifty-six were made up of who?
Employees. Simply employees.
Okay.
So, we put it out there, and we said, you know, here's an opportunity for you to give us some information. Now, I will tell you, I think that what they select as important issues, I think we've covered. I mean, that'll be one of the questions that you, you'll want to think about. What are the most important management and leadership characteristics the next administrator should demonstrate? So, we had six out of, we asked them to select six out of seventeen possible ones. So, again, if we go to pages, oh, excuse me, it's twelve and thirteen, you start to look at, at numbers. Teamwork and collaboration sort of jumps out at you, because we had thirty-nine people that included that as, as their, you know, high six skills.
So, people ranked one, two, three, four, five, six on this section?
Right, you can see that ten people on teamwork and collaboration, ten people said it was the most important one. Eight said it was next most important. Thirteen said it was third. And then, you really have the bulk of your folks responding there. You see one person put it fourth, four at five, and three at six. So, again, I, I've gone through this, and I've sort of looked at what are the, what are the, the, the big items? The items that we want to make sure are reflected in some way in the profile. And if something is here that isn't, didn't come up through your comments, that would be where I would say, then maybe we should look at putting something, something in. But I, I think we've dovetailed pretty well, if you look at ones that are, say, like over twenty, relationship management. We had some discussion about that. That was one of the additions you talked about. Conflict management. Now, I didn't say conflict management so much as, you know, working through, trying to find common ground. To me, those are all things that mean you're, you're trying to work through differences. The very last question asked them to talk about what they saw as issues. And on that one-
Pages eight.
That'll be your very last, page nineteen. Growth and development is by, by far the one that receives the most comments. Then we get to community relations, employee development. Everything below that, you know, scored less than twenty, twenty hits. But it, it gives you some idea of things that are important to the staff. And it also seems to me that when you look at where those larger numbers are, they seem to align pretty well with what we were hearing from you and hearing from department heads.
Yeah.
Oh, and there is, I will, I will comment too. Someone will likely find that public safety and parks and recreation, for some reason, were coming out several times on page nineteen. Actually, I had a text while I was driving here, somebody saying, "It didn't come out right." So, but the numbers are not suggesting that they are, they are high concerns for you.
How does the profile handle that employee development portion?
The, the way that it is expressed here, building the team, on page four, towards the bottom, we talked about, in addition to hiring staff, succession planning will be important to develop employees for future roles in the organization, and to ensure the continuity of critical city services. So, I mean, I've really kind of broadened that in a, in a way that you're thinking about maintaining critical services, not just, you know, who might be nearing, who might be nearing retirement.
Sherida, it's also in the candidate profile.
Mm-huh.
I would say in one fifty-one.
Yes. Engages employees at all levels of the organization, recognizes their contributions. So, we've got it. Nice, thank you.
Employee training and development, okay.
I gave you some information that we pulled off of the League of Minnesota City Salary Database. The database currently has twenty-fourteen data. I understand that you had increased your pay scales three percent for twenty-fifteen. That's comparable to what many other communities have done. And so, what we did to try to give you some idea of what we're seeing in other comparable organizations, is to take all of the information that's provided and to increase it by three percent. Now, this is not all of the metro areas, all of the, the communities within the metro area that are of similar population or, or geographically near you, but they were the ones that, that seemed to be most consistent with the position, and, and kind of giving us a, a good sense of salary range without distorting it. I, I threw out communities where there was kind of a distortion, and you could tell that their results were, were skewing this upward. But otherwise, these, these clustered pretty nicely. We have four communities that have a range for their city administrator, city manager. And if we look at that from the twenty-fourteen dollars being increased by three percent, we're looking at one hundred and thirteen thousand to basically one hundred and forty-three thousand as, as a range. If we look at actual- If we look at actual salaries, and this is in some ways almost a better thing to look at because we have a number of communities where the salary is being established in a contract and it isn't on their pay range. So it's just really one point. There's not a ma, a minimum and a maximum. If we take all of those, we're looking at an average actual salary in, in twenty-fourteen multiplied by three percent of around one hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Now, you're running pretty close to one thirty-five as your maximum right now. That suggests to me that you are a little lower than market. From the standpoint of doing recruitment, we're not negotiating agreements or giving an employment offer at this point. To me, this suggests that you might wanna say you wanna be, say, at, at one hundred and forty thousand, up to one hundred and forty thousand, and just put it out there like that. So we're not saying that that's, you know, where you're going, but it, it, it gives us some room. And we can also do a little bit more work for you in terms of if there's a way we can look at accommodating that within your salary scale. You might be like some of these communities where they are just putting a salary out there and it's not part of the, the salary range. There are pros and cons to that. So I wanna, I don't wanna, you know, just have a summary decision made here. But I think in, in looking at this, with the idea of attracting people, I, I would suggest you, you give some thought to up to one hundred and forty thousand. Knowing that you haven't, you haven't signed anything on an employment offer at that amount.
We, we don't have a minimum listed here. We don't wanna talk about minimums, but.
Well, you know, and I, I think right now, I think your easiest way in doing something, instead of to put that, that, that minimum there. I mean, I'm gonna be asking people, I'm gonna be asking people for salary information. So we're not gonna get somebody who's currently making sixty thousand who comes in and, and, you know, somehow qualifies for something more than that. That, that's gonna be information that you will, you will know. We will have that. So.
Does our current employee handbook and our steps and grades and stuff cover the city administrator position?
Yes.
Okay, so if you start at one forty, that, that person's eligible for the steps on that grade.
Depends.
Right.
It depends because the idea would be that somebody would come, they would start at a step. And so nothing here, right now, your, your, your salary maximum is, is slightly lower than one thirty-five. So what I'm doing is saying, put it out there a little bit higher. Now, we might look at this and say, there's a way you can keep this person on the salary plan. You might put them at a higher grade. So it might be one higher grade that you, you, you move to for this that would accommodate that. And then you would have the steps. You just kind of continue the mathematics of that, of that position. You might say, we're gonna take the person off this, the salary plan. And there are pros and cons to that that we could certainly present with you. But, you know, if, 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 you're, you're, you're in, you're in control with this. I mean, we would make sure, however you work that through, that we're working with that piece of it. Give you a little bit more time to, you know, get information and think about how to handle it. I'm just concerned. I think the concern is, pardon me, I'm getting it too. I think the, the concern would be not having a salary out there that's gonna be competitive for your search. I mean, it'll, it'll, it's, it's, it's a little lower than market. And so, I mean, you could do that, but that's not, that's not the ideal position. And so I promised everyone I would come and give you some, some thoughts and give you some information on this and, and, and how I would handle it. And so that's, that's what I would suggest you consider.
It starts the negotiation.
What, what are the next steps? What are you, is anything particular you're looking for from us this evening? Or, or what, how's our path look forward?
Well, here, here are the next steps. I would say, first of all, the changes that you're talking about to this don't seem real dramatic. And I think that I could go back and make changes and send another version out to you. I do want to make sure that you have time to look at it. I don't want anyone to feel rushed on this. However, if it's looking pretty good, I think we were feeling that you could come back and approve this on February seventeenth. I mean, the other option is if we've got something that's pretty good and I can give you some information tomorrow that incorporates some of these, these statements, you take another, you know, you take another look at it. And if, 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 if you're okay, and, you know, people say, hey, we're, we're okay. I wanna work with your staff to get this laid out, put some photos into it. We'd be ready to go. We might be ready by the end of the week. And I think anything that moves that along is probably helpful for you. But your comfort is the most important thing here. This is critical because when we start looking at folks and, and talking about folks, this is the baseline that we're gonna come back to.
We're gonna have to discuss this compensation package before we're ready to push this out on any candidates. And then I'd like to take some time to look at it, but I think we've kinda, you know, we need some ideas to start with, but.
And I think the question for you is, do you wanna come back and, and put that on an agenda for February seventeenth? You know, and if you're feeling comfortable, you, you know, you think that we can, we can do this, provide ideas and, and, you know, have some stuff going back and forth and be ready before that? I don't mind. I mean, my sense is your, your comfort level. Everyone's comfort level.
I think we need to put the one forty on the, for the package, but it's a negotiation at that point.
Exactly.
You know, that's not guaranteed they're gonna get.
That's right. That's right.
If, if we would find an extremely qualified person and give them the one forty, then it's gonna be a negotiating deal in the future because there's nothing set at this point. We would have to decide on that.
Right.
No upward motivation, but I'd agree.
My thought is, I too like counsel writing. I wanna just take some time and read the whole thing. And then in the meantime, I was thinking you could make your changes to it, send it back out to staff. Staff could get it out to us. And if there's any other questions that we might have as we're, as we're reading through this, I'm just gonna send them to Chris. So here's something else, you know, and.
Absolutely.
Kinda go from there and work the bugs out and get it back to, to the seventeenth. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Do you think any, barring any major changes, that one of the council decides to move on? Can we do this before the seventeenth?
I'm, I'm extremely pleased with what you've caught in here with our organizational needs and, and strengths and, and where we're going with things. So I, I think that I'm, I'd say ninety-five percent comfortable with where we're at right now. There's not much, I think, that needs to be changed. So if there are a couple of things that you wanted to add based on our discussion, and if all five of us are comfortable with it, I don't have a problem with it going out at the end of the week.
I, I have you all on a group email, and so I will continue to work with that so that you get that information. And if you send information, you know, back to me or back to Chris, I, I can, I can continue to massage that. And I don't have any problem leaving this kind of hanging. If you guys are okay with it and wanna go with it, great. If you decide that you want a little bit more time to look at it, that's great. I, I, I can be flexible on that.
I'm just curious if this is a legal question. Do we have to vote on this?
Right. That's what I was wondering.
I mean, before we put it out.
I will. I will tell you that I've done it different ways. I've had councils vote. I've had councils, you know, just kinda say, hey, we're all on board. So it, it, it's whatever works for you.
I would just like to have Ms. Wilson ask.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to make sure.
And Matt, if you're not comfortable, we can wait till the seventeenth.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna spend a week reading it over it with all the other information since this is the first time I've seen it. And I'm gonna work directly with our staff. I don't, I don't wanna go around our staff to you. I'm just gonna work with staff and they can work with you or whatever. And we'll figure out, you know, where I'm sitting on the compensation thing, what I'm thinking, if I have any other questions to ask or not. And if, if I'm good with the changes that you make, I'll just tell staff, it looks good to me. And, and I would prefer it just comes back at the seventeenth and we just adopt it, you know.
That's great.
Short of any major barn burning changes that somebody else might make, that somebody else might disagree with or whatever. But, you know, for the most part, I don't see nothing catastrophic in it.
All right. Any other major concerns or issues we need to discuss with this? This is great information too.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Employee survey stuff.
And I'll see if I can get that, if we can get a, something that looks a little bit better. I will definitely give you another version.
Thank you, Matt.
Mike pointed out that some of his concerns or whatever he talked about were, were in this document. And I gotta say, I don't think not one thing I brought up is in here. Just kidding.
Poor Matt.
I saw a lot of my, my discussion.
I think you would've deserved it.
I think we're all on the same page with a lot of these ideas.
Yeah. Thank you. This is great. So now we're gonna move on to nine B, organizational study, organizational structure study.
Good sir. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dave Unmott, and I'm comfortable saying that. Do I have to take Matt's kidding if, after I'm doing my presentation? He says there's nothing in here that I, so I'm just gonna preempt him a little bit and say I'm on guard for that, so. I, if, if I'm a familiar face, it's because I've been in this chamber before over the years in a different capacity. And secondly, last fall, I had an opportunity to do an interview with you as part of this work product. So for those of you who didn't know me, that was the first time you met me. And Chris is putting it up. And so thi, this segues very well to what you just talked about with my colleague. And we are, we are together, but we are essentially separate as well because these are, there's a correlation here between the two, but they are independent conversations. But you'll see that as I go through it. I have about a seven and a quarter page report that you will, you will get that I'm gonna brief tonight. I maybe let Chris do a little bit of an introduction if she wants to. I'm gonna go over it at a high level, and I'm gonna talk about what it is. This is the assimilation of the work that I did in the fall and last winter in anticipation of a conversation on what's the most efficient and optimal structure. So you talk in this chamber often about what you do and why you do it, how you pay for it, and those sort of things. This is, you know, how to design it. And so it's not an action item tonight, although I know that the staff would be interested in a response and may be interested in kind of a general reaction and maybe some direction, and I'll let Chris articulate that. But tonight, we're gonna talk about how to paint the picture of what this organization should look like and why it's good timing and why now.
That was great timing. We practiced. Nice work.
I was here this afternoon. We practiced that. What, what this is not is an organizational study. It's not a, a, an assessment of, of, of how well you do things. So it's not a, it's not a, 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 a report that says you're, you're good at this or you're, you're not necessarily good at that. So it's, it's not, it's a, it's a component of a bigger piece. If you recall, the people that were with me were from BKV Architects. And, and so I came in under the auspices of the architect firm, looking at if we're gonna remodel space or build space or do something different with space, how should we design this organization for the future? We know what the present is, but what should it look like for the future? And Chris can talk about where the, the space piece of this may be, but obviously circumstances, you know, have changed since, since that started. And so you take a look at, well, what's the most immediate priority and how do you, how do you respond to it? So my purpose today, if you, if, if I think about it, and I was kind of in a preparation tonight at dinner, was really kind of threefold. One is an education piece. I think there's more here that you, you may not be exposed to in terms of just conceptual things. Two is kind of an awareness. And three is, is, is the potential to kind of seize the opportunity. You know, and to try to convince you not what to select, but why the value of having this conversation is relevant today. And so there's a, there's kind of a, you know, I don't wanna say relax and enjoy yourself because I'm not sure it's that much fun. But it's certainly going to be stimulating in terms of what and why. So let's go to the, there's about four or five sections, and you'll be able to study this, and I, and I say this with sincerity, is you'll be able to read this, you know, later on, and, and you'll spend some time on it to digest it. But the, the, go down if you could, just go up a little. The fundamental question is what is the optimal organizational structure needed to support the city's vision and goals? And, and, and the timing is good to have this conversation. And the body of the first, the first few paragraphs really deals with what's going on both externally and internally in municipal governments in Minnesota today. And the, the net effect is that there's a bunch of pressures that are kind of colliding, both, you know, environmental, I don't mean, I don't mean land-based, but external from places like the Metropolitan Council or the state or the federal government, healthcare reform, and also internal pressures because you have a lot of priorities. You have to decide what you wanna fund and when and why, and how to do that. So you take this big collision of interests, and, and you have policy challenges. And you have spirited debates about what to do and why to do things, and that's very healthy. You know, that's very healthy. And so the, and then coupled with, for the city of Shakopee really is the, the growth that you're gonna anticipate. If you were an organization that wasn't growing, or if you knew you were gonna be twenty thousand people or marginally changed for the long time to come, that's a whole different construct of a conversation than it is when you can reasonably anticipate if things go as anticipated, at some point in time, you're gonna be potentially doubled in population. You know, when that might be, it's not for me to predict. But you at least have to factor that into this conversation. So the backdrop of this is that you have some dynamic variables that are impacting you, and you have some great opportunities that you could seize the moment on. If you go to the bottom, the, the, the second piece in the background is, you know, what are really some of the immediate organizational priorities that might be driving a conversation on structure? And I've listed six there, and these came from the interviews. And we also interviewed staff, so we interviewed the department heads as well. There wasn't an evaluation of these, which is what an organizational study is. It's a, it's a, it's, it's, you know, get into these at much greater depth. These are just the identification of things. But reasonable people can agree to some extent that these are factual. You know, and maybe people's opinion might differ on which degree or et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, change in the city administrator, upcoming departures of key staff members or, or vacancies in key staff members, inefficient space allocation, four, you know, where are you gonna put the facility? And we had great conversation in our meetings, remember, about either right here or out in Public Works and Police, and, and what does that mean for the long term, short term? What does that mean for what we should do to this building, if at all? And, you know, and there was no decisions made on that or no final choices that were, were asked or determined. Competing priorities for operational capital dollars, that's not unique to the city of Shakopee, obviously. But it's certainly relevant in a growing community when capital needs are, are high. And finally, the traditional workplace culture that you talked to us about. And, and that's a, that's a condition under which is a priority. And you often refer to the term in, in, in kind of common organizational vernacular, it's the silo concept, you know? People who operate kind of independent of one another and come together as needed, but they're not kind of holistically working in the same direction. You've, you've raised that term. You, you hear the term often. So, you know, a, a question to ponder tonight at some point in time is, are there others? I mean, are there other things that you see that are immediate priorities that would add to this or even compound the importance of this conversation being very timely? So in summary, you have staffing issues, you have space issues, you have money issues, and you have priority issues. You know, and, and those four things are really relevant. So if you go to the next one, Chris. So I, I picked this up because I'm familiar with your design of how your agenda has been 'cause I've read it over the years for quite a number of times. And I picked it up 'cause there's a symbolic point to this. But in, in my organizational studies, one of the things I look for right away is what's the foundation upon which the city is built? And I don't mean municipal buildings. I mean organizational foundation. And you really look for three things, or sometimes four. Is there a vision? Is there a mission? Are there strategies? And are there goals? And whether or not they're used or applied in the immediacy is certainly a valid question, but if they're there, they're relevant. And of course, in the city of Shakopee, you have those, and they're right on your agenda. They're also on your website. You know, you have a mission, you have strategies, and you have goals. And in my conversations with staff and in kind of articulating, you know, how, how, how are they applied? Are they useful? Are they valuable? And there's always a degree of whether or not they're relevant anymore to, to a current council, especially if they're created by a past council. You know, and, but they're there. And, and you even, you even have them for people to see. So to me, they're relevant. So what I look for is guides. I look for things that would say, well, what do they provide that might direct someone like me who is talking about how you design an organization? Are there any directions there? And, and sometimes they're obvious, and sometimes they're not. In the mission and strategies, you know, they weren't so obvious. But if you go down to goals, Chris, you know, I thought two of them leaped out at me as being very obvious, number three and number five. Number three, plan for and adequately fund infrastructure and asset needs. You know, an asset could be a, a road. It could be a sewer, a water, a storm sewer. You know, an asset could be a road, it could be a sewer, a water, a storm sewer. Technology is an asset, but so are your buildings, you know, and so are your people. And then five, create efficiencies through a culture of technology and training, which expects continuous improvements in no less than highest level customer service. So it might be somewhat indirect, but for someone like me, I think that that's very relevant to a guide for how you might wanna design an organization, an organization structure. Next one, Chris. I'm just going at this at a high level, hopefully, that's good pace. The next thing I wanna offer, this is something you're gonna process and digest after the meeting, is it's easy for someone like me to come in and make an observation, and I'm asked to do it quite often, about what the organization looks like and is it correct in a study? And then you get deeper into the question of why did you do certain things? You know, why did you make this change? Why did you move this body to that person, et cetera, et cetera? And you discover. So you discover those sorts of things. In this particular case, this is just suggestive best practices of how to do things, and I wanna just cover them at a high level. So there are clearly things not to do, and oftentimes, they're done, and for maybe the right reason, you know, but in retrospect, they might not have been. So as you think about how to structure the city of Shakopee, and I'm gonna talk about some concepts in a few minutes, really five key thoughts. You wanna do it to improve integration, you wanna do it to rectify span of control, and I'm gonna talk about that in a minute. You know, in county government, where I have a great deal of history, there are still some county administrators that have up to 20 or 24 direct reports. Eighteen, sixteen, eighteen, I mean, that's just, it's not common anymore, but it's certainly still there. Three, focus on community organizational strategic issues. Four, repair structures that don't meet current expectations, outdated, and they're, these are oftentimes tied together. And finally, enhance organizational consistency. You wanna distribute things down throughout the organization, and sometimes if you have a broad structure, it's unreliable. Some people can do it and some people won't, and so you have an immersion that's half-done here, not-done here, or fully-done here, and you create inequities in organizations. It happens all the time. And similarly, reasons not to do things. One, around current personalities. It's always easier to move Sally away from Tom, if Tom and Sally don't get along, so give Sally to Fred. Oh, the problem solved. Well, not quite, you know? But it seems to be because they don't fight anymore. I mean, that's a simplistic way to describe that. Two, reorganize out of convenience, just, you know, get up in the morning and say, well, we're reorganized today, you know? Opposed to logic and anticipated outcomes, which is what you're doing. So you're already not doing that one. Three, reorganize around historical conflicts or problems, oftentimes personalities or other things. Four, power moves. You know, someone wants more control over a particular department or some action of that. And then finally, reorganize believing that just by restructuring, you fix organizational issues, you know, and that's not the case. You know, there are generally people, cultural, staffing issues, efficiency issues, there's all kinds of dynamics that go behind it. So what are the catalysts? So those are kind of things to do, things not to do, principles. Four catalysts that really are relevant, and so if you look at those, they fit the city of Shakopee very well. One, a change in personnel, normally top management. You know, you have that. You have that also at the departmental level. So you really don't need any other reason to have this conversation because you have that. Second, a facility or space change. That's why I was brought on to begin with. So there's two, two of two. Three, a change in policy from the city council, new strategies or goals. Well, if you have a customer service philosophy, or if you have other sorts of, you know, let's say theoretically, the next one is you wanna go to a one-stop model, you wanna move this out to the, I'm hypothetical here, to out where Public Works and Police are. Well, you have all kinds of opportunity to change, you know, how you provide services. And then, and so any kind of change in the council strategies, you can take and move these around or do something different. So at least, you know, three of the four. So you don't, you don't even need any theoretically, but to strengthen the question of how you should look at your structure, I think in my recommendation, you have at least three of those that are driving this question today, which just reinforces the potential value. Page five, Chris. So I go to, just a little past, one more, kind of two more pages of text, and then we can get into some concepts and questions and discussion and whatever. So one of the things that I wanted to do was to present kind of an aggregate, aggrancy of the thoughts of what I've learned, but to do that, I have to qualify it. So I have four qualifiers, and I think these are relevant. One, not everybody always agrees with these, which is just fine, kind of you view the world through your own set of eyes, and mine are different than yours. I'm not for anything, I'm not against anything, I'm not with anybody or, you know, for anybody or one building or two, you know, I'm objective, so that's what I represent. Two, they're kind of an aggregation of thoughts and points in time. Things change. I can come in and do a comprehensive organizational study, and in the middle of it, someone would leave, or something major would happen right in the middle of the study, so that changes things. Three, they're not, these particular bullet points on five and six aren't in any order, they're not prioritized. And then finally, sometimes they're just plain old common sense. You know, you look at them and go, well, we know that, you know? But the relevancy of these, and they're included, is because they factor into the discussion of structure. And there isn't a set number you produce, it isn't, I need 10, or five, or 15, or 30, it's just what adds value to your structure conversation, and there's 13. And I'm gonna, again, do them at a high level. Chris, you just move up, and we can come back and talk through these. An organizational structure represents how the city wants to design its delivery system. Any number of structures work, it's essential to recognize the implementation of new structure is really a change management process. So, and that goes back to a conversation just a second ago about if you just change structure, you don't look at it more holistically, that you also have to change how it gets put together, you have to implement kind of a change management model. And they're relatively simplistic, they're often always intuitive, although there are other things you can look as resources to help, but you just don't move boxes around and say, okay, now it's gonna be this. You have to get inside those boxes and talk through, what does it mean? How is it gonna work? And so it takes a lot of effort. And so change management is really a relevant consideration here. Second, and in my opinion, the city administrator is the most important position on the staff. He or she sets the tone, they provide the leadership, they're the link to the council, to the staff, to the community, to the media, to the citizens, there's all kinds of dynamics. So the bedrock of what your preferred structure is based on the knowledge, skills, and qualities you want in this individual. They're connected, they really are. Three, you know, it's my professional opinion, after being involved in local government for 31 years and six years as of February 2nd in this particular position, you know, right now, and you're gonna see in a minute, your current organizational structure, is your city administrator has 10 direct reports. And I would make an argument, and I don't mean to argue, but I mean in a presentation way, that that's a little bit too many, given the dynamics that you have and where you're gonna go with this organization, and the heightened expectations you have for this position, especially in today's business model. Can it work? Sure. Can it work with more? It does. Is it best if you're looking at redesigning, that you may consolidate that a little bit and change the expectations of what this person do? Yes. Six to eight seems to be a pretty good norm. You know, it could be more, it could be less. It's all a function of what you want. If you think about it really simplistically, it's how much involvement do you want this position to be in the day-to-day business of running city government? If you have competent department heads and competent staff, that individual doesn't have to be involved in the day-to-day grind. They can step up and do other things that you may want in that position. If there's dysfunction or problems or issues, then they have to get down a little bit deeper. But the basic question is, the more direct reports you have, the more accountability and responsibility you have to oversee the day-to-day, because you have to have more meetings and more involvement to help the people that are reporting to you. The less you have of those, the more you distribute the responsibility. And you'll see that in a few minutes in some designs. I'll keep going, Chris. I wanna go to the last one, and this is clearly something that I've kind of, it's come together for me the more I get involved in these. And I would say when I left, you know, maybe from my experience in Scott County, after 11 years, it kind of was there, maybe latent or dormant, but now that I've been involved in looking at organizations, I can truly say, whether it's a big county or a small county, or a big city or a little city, and everything between, one of the central features of effectiveness in organizations is how well your administrative support functions are, how strong they are, how well they're staffed, how well they're funded, and how well they work. And it's really relatively easy to go into an organization, and if you have little or no IT, or decentralized HR, you know, or a weak finance, or no administration, in some organizations, you know, especially county governments, they have a county coordinator, or some have nothing. You know, you can go right to the heart and soul of an organization by looking at those four functions, and you can make a judgment of how effective they are. It's a general comment, but it's true. So my suggestion, as you keep advancing, as you keep growing, as you keep expanding, and maybe not tomorrow, but at some point in time, you really wanna look at the resources you're applying in IT and HR. Right now, it may work perfectly where it is, you know, because if you think about how you fund them and who's doing it, you know, it works right. But five, 10, 15 years down the line, it may still report there, but I think you're gonna wanna take a look at how you're funding those and how many resources you put to it, because, here's why. People think it's support, it's overhead, it's not. It's support for your line functions, police, public works. The people that are delivering the services rely on effective HR and good IT. And the stronger they are, the better service you can provide, and that's my opinion. Next one. Just a handful more, and we can get into some pictures. Leadership development is really critical, it's tied to the HR function, but this is certainly also a passion. If you have a level of supervisors and you have department heads and you have administrator, you'll have, no matter what structure you have, focusing on the professional development of your mid-managers is an essential priority in organizations. And oftentimes, it's overlooked, or it's done in a passive or a cursory way. You know, because we don't have any money or don't have any resources, or, and this is what's very common, they just don't have any time. They're too busy. You know, they're too busy doing the day-to-day and other things. So the leadership component of management is de-emphasized, and when I go into organizations and I evaluate them, you can see it so easily. You know, you just see that the leadership aspect of what they're responsible for is just not manifested very well, or even a priority. You know, so as you look at organizational design, you wanna keep that in mind, that this isn't just about, you know, the top boxes, but this is about the people that are involved, that are making it happen. And the supervisors and the staff below that are really people who deliver, more often than not. The next couple, there isn't a consensus on the efficiency and effectiveness of the current delivery system model and whether the city should move to a one-capacity model or retain. I mean, you know that, you've talked about that before, that's just a statement of fact. The present city hall has its limitations in and of itself, is in and of itself, is not a viable long-term solution to accommodate programs and services with a population estimated to be that high. There's a key asterisk, though, because I'm not a space designer, and that's really why BKV was brought on board to do that. And then I wanted to reflect back what the city council said to me in aggregate, and you were consistent. You know, you were consistent. Not everybody talked about it at the same level or same depth or same degree, but I generalized to the conversation, and I think this is good, council members. Five, five things. You wanna maximize the value of technology, you see that. Two, you wanna provide optimal customer service, you wanna do the best you can. Three, you wanna ensure that you're efficient. And what I often see is that efficiency is like, you have to invest in it to become it. You know, unless you're lucky, you just aren't efficient by saying we wanna be efficient. You have to do something to be efficient. And so often, organizations stop there because they don't wanna spend a dollar to save $5 in a year, you know? And to be efficient, you have to look at your systems, process, structure. And systems and processes, what staff do and others do, this is a structural conversation. I wanna break down organizational silos, and you wanna address security concerns that came up. And in my observations, it's important that the council identify the level of priority for these five areas, and they can and should serve as a guide for the design of the structure at some point in time. You know, there's always limited resources, I said this in a presentation the other day. In 1983, in my first job, the little city of Belle Plaine didn't have any money, and that was 31 years ago, and local government still doesn't have any money, you know? And so it's pretty fair to conclude that whenever we all retire from what we're doing in local government, whatever that is and wherever that is, in all likelihood, we're gonna say, we just don't have enough money. You know, I just don't think that's ever gonna change, in whatever we do. The city's population growth will drive your expansion in staff and services, you know, and I think it will behoove you in the study and the future evaluation to, you know, continue your projections of that, maybe do some comparable benchmarks with other cities that went from 20 to 40, and what did they have, you know, look at that. Those sorts of analysis help support the rationale for why you do some things you do. And then the last one I have is, even though it's not directly related to structure, it's relevant because you talked about it, you even mentioned it tonight. The city has a strong and proven track record of partnerships and collaborations. You know, and I'm not implying, nor am I either suggesting, but it isn't unheard of either, that people will look to see how they deliver systems before they build buildings. And more so in smaller entities or in different sorts of environs, if we'd still have this recession, glad we don't, but if we did, maybe the conversation about scale and what other things happen in that context would be expanded more than it is. You know, joint police departments, joint fire departments, joint this, joint that, you know? Those kinds of things are relative, and if those sorts of things happen, look at the city of West St. Paul and South St. Paul, you know, they combine fire departments, you know? If those kinds of things happen, well, they're relevant to structure and they're relevant to design and governance. How do you govern? So those were the set of findings I'm presenting tonight as backdrop to these kind of design options. So in summary, what I tried to do briefly was kind of set the stage with the background of the timeliness of this. The second was kind of the, what are catalyst for organizational design, kind of good principles? The third is what's the city's foundation, mission, vision, strategies? And the fourth was findings. So those four pieces tied into the basics of what I wanna do here for the next couple of minutes. So if, maybe pause there to see if there's any questions on that, then what we have are one, two, three, kind of five pictures for you, in a conceptual way, we wanna share with you. That you'll also see, and we won't spend any time on it per se, is we have two designs of two communities that are different communities that represent different philosophies and functions. This is Minnetonka, and this one is Lakeville. Lakeville's gonna look more like the city's structure today, Minnetonka's gonna look more like one of the design options that you see in a few minutes. So we just thought, we're gonna kind of represent that. We made a request for Apple Valley, but it didn't come in yet, and we can easily get that if we want, but as you know and as Chris knows, you can get as many of those as you want, you know?
This is our current, Dave, I just thought it might be worth.
Yeah, no, it's the current design. So we won't go back to page seven, because I don't toggle back and forth, but if you go to page seven in your handout, it just kind of briefly summarizes the differences in the options. Again, they're not analyzed, they're not with recommendation, and they're not talking about people. They're talking about a business model. All of those sorts of things are relevant, but we're talking about concepts today. So this is what it looks like today, there are 10 direct reports. You have three, in economic development, you have management analyst, administrative assistant, obviously, police and fire chief, community development director, public works, parks and rec director, finance, and assistant city administrator. That's a pretty traditional look to a city government organizational structure that really were created many years ago, that are still being sustained in many respects in many other places. You know, Lakeville is probably another, a good example that looks something like that. You won't find them, they all look alike, but if you look at them kind of in a conceptual way, you'll see that there's a distributed number of department heads, all doing a different function in city government, along with three administrative support staff types, and I mean that in general, executive economic development coordinators and administrative support staff, but it's, they're not in a, they don't have a department. And so you have three, seven, there's your 10. And let me say that, and you'll see it in their writing, it's certainly within your purview and in your decision to say, for the future of Shakopee, this is what we want. So Dave Unmott isn't here advocating that you have to change your structure, and it has to be something different than this. If you decide at the end of the day, after your evaluation and your study with your staff and in your organization, that this is the right structure, then feel good about the fact that you've studied it. Feel good about that fact. But it's not for me to be presumptuous, nor is it for me to suggest that, you know, it's absolutely important that you do something different. Go to option one, there's four options. Go to option one, there's four options. So, again, functions, option one. As five direct reports, and, and the, 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 the names within the boxes are, you know, could, they could be different, but, uh, depart, you, you combine two main functions, and you end up with five direct reports. Uh, and this, this follows the principle of combining like functions. You'll have service integration on the right with support staff, uh, and, and the smaller departments that don't report to the administrator. And on the left, you have the land use, geography, infrastructure. Some organizations are taking a look at this business model recently, um, two of them have, have gone to that. It may or may not work in, in the city of Shakopee, but it reduces your silo effect. It, uh, if you get the right people in the leadership positions of those two, you can build common cultures, you can do seamless service integration. And this also then reduces the city administrator's work in kind of the day-to-day business of having to deal with these other departments here, and some departments over there on the right side, administrative services. You keep police and fire separate, and, um, and, and recreation or parks is also separate. We, you know, kind of talk, what do we do with that one? You know, what do we do with parks and recreation, because it stands all by itself. Does it belong there? It's certainly not an administrative function. And just for a conceptual picture, we thought, you know, we keep it, we, we could keep it, because it's really recreation. You know, and recreation doesn't fit in development land and infrastructure, and not really administrative services. Next one, option, option two, again, they're not prioritized or in any order. Option two is, if you look in, uh, look, focus on finance in option two. What it really does principally is say that, as a city government, and as a city council, you believe that there is a certain function or functions that are just too important, that you don't want them embedded in another depart, in another larger department. And the one that I pro-offer to you tonight is really, finance would be the kind of natural one. You know, if you would say to me, if I didn't have, if I had that blank, and you would say, "Hey, Dave, which one would likely be out of the right side first?" Given what I know about this city, and given what I know about your HR and IT and the other services, I would say finance is often the one, because it's budget and money where you might want a direct link to your administrator. You don't have to, but if there is one. So, this business model essentially says, in principle, that there may be functions in your two macro areas that you just want the administrator to have more hands-on work with. Now, if, if, if you'd go back to the first option, I know it isn't entirely relevant to the city of Shakopee, but when I was the deputy county administrator in Dakota County, they essentially operated with three major divisions. That division on the right is what I ran as the deputy county administrator. This was the physical development division, and then they had the human services division, and you don't have human services. But what's key here, and what's often lost in this, and you can go to the next one, too, is that, is that i- in culture, and that's why culture and change management is so important, this doesn't, either one of these, one, two, three, or even four, they don't, they don't abrogate the responsibility of the administrator to be effective and to work with everybody else. It's just that the responsibility for those functions rests with someone else and not directly with the administrator. So, in, in the case of Dakota County, Brand Richardson, he had a lot of contact with people that worked for me, but we had a great trusting relationship, and when he talked to them, they let me know, or I said, "Brand, go ahead and talk to someone in IT, I don't have to be involved in it." So, it's, it's not a disconnect, it's a cultural change to have a lot of trust, and you have a good relationship, because there's just so much there, that oftentimes, the administrator doesn't need to go through structure to get something. You kind of, it's like councils work with staff when there's a trusting relationship, you just, it just works. It functions, because people all have the right value system. So, that's the cultural change that would have to go with this, because you don't want the, the administrator not to have connection with the communication staff, right? Not to always go through the, uh, someone else, but, you know, that's, in structure, it doesn't, doesn't say that, it just looks like, like boxes. Well, here's the next one, option three. And option three, again, the same basic principle, um, but it's the combination of police and fire into a public safety model. It's okay, it helps to kind of, there's police and fire separate. And so, it's the integration, so you would have, you'd have a public safety department head, and then you'd have police and fire connected with them. And then you, you, and then the same basic principle applies on the, on the development land infrastructure, administrative services. If you go to the fourth option, which is really the last picture for the night, again, same model following, it's just the, the division of a function in administrative services of finance reporting directly. So, I mean, there's, is, is my last bullet on the, in the last page says there are other iterations, but essentially, they're just derivatives of the same principle. You have all functions reporting to the city administrator, or you, you consolidate functions to report to the administrator, and just, to what extent you want to consolidate is the fundamental question, and who that should be. There are natural tendencies in the marketplace of city government, and that's what we tried to connect. Administration and all of the stuff in development land and infrastructure. And how you want to parcel them in or parcel them out is some of the choices you'd want to consider, or you'd want to look at. So, the, the question for tonight is just to discuss, i- to an extent, and then Chris is looking for, and she can elaborate, looking for some direction at some point in time on, you know, do you have a preference? Do you want them to, staff to research and come back? Because each one has its own implementation challenges and implementation plans and costs. And none of those are represented tonight, because we're just looking at basic principles and concepts. And so, if you have direction at some point in time, and if it's not tonight, in the future, then that would be the next step. Thank you.
Couple of questions. First off, how do we get all those slides that are missing in our packet of information that are on the screen?
I'll email them to you in the morning.
Okay. Again, since this is a first, I've seen this, I'd, I'd like to be able to go over it myself. Questions I have is, uh, you know, we're looking at this from our perspective. So, the question I have for you is, at what level do we want to look at this, if we want to look at this, from the people we represent's perspective? And I, I make that, that case, because from a citizen that we serve, this has a direct impact on them, okay? If I wanted to get a fence permit, I come to city hall currently. I get my fence permit. If I have a question about that permit, I come back to city hall to find out, I have to go to public works. Okay, so, from a efficiency of service standpoint, there's some items in, 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 I don't know if they're unique to Shakopee, but our park mowing is done by public works. Well, the parks maintenance crew, which is basically got the equipment and public works. So, some of these things are integrated to some extent, but they're infrastructure. But really, from a, from a person's standpoint, from the Joe Public standpoint, it would appear to be efficient to be able to walk into one place and be able to get your answers, instead of being shuffled all over town. Okay? So, my question to you is, are we looking at this from, from our position? Or, or should, should we be looking at it from the operational side of the city and staff? And the citizen, is it a 50/50, is it a 75/25, what's the ratio of how we should be looking at this?
Mayor, Councilmember, a minute, I, um, I, 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 I'm just hesitating, because I want to be articulate. I'm not sure there's a division of math there, where you would suggest that you can apply a degree of, of, of value to a certain perspective, 30, 30, 30, or whatever. I think it's all of them together aggregated. And i- i- it's simplistic for me, but if, what I would look at, what does the council want? The council wants a mission, they want their strategies, and they want their goals implemented. That's where the council needs to, and then tell the staff, "This is what we want."
Well, let me redo this, okay, let me try this a different way. Let's, hypothetically, if we take option B, and that works really good for staff, and I'm not saying it does, I'm just hypothetically. Option B works really good for staff, we're gonna implement that, but it's really, really poor for customer service on the citizen's side. Or option C is really good for the customer service side, but not so good for staff. I mean, there has to be some balance here.
Oh, I think they come together, if I may, I mean, I think they come together, council member, and you wouldn't do one that's bad for public service, you just wouldn't. I mean, I know this council, I know this community, you're not gonna pick a design that's good for staff and bad for the service. You find one that fits it all best.
So, we don't have to follow this model, we could, we could come up with our own option, basically.
Oh, yeah.
By intertwining things.
Now, these are just concepts, these are just pictures.
Okay.
I'm, I'm wondering if you're, you're confusing, because we had the discussion with you, and we're talking about the facilities. And I think that's separate of this discussion, this is, it definitely will have an impact, you know? But, but I think what we're talking about now is just the organizational structure, not the, where we plant them in a, in a building, although that will come into play. I, I see where you're going with that, because I know what you're, I know your concerns there. But I like the idea of, of combining some of the, the silos, as you presented. How we do that, how that will work with the, the dynamics, that's another good question. One of the things that caught my eye was, uh, the public safety, division of, you know, division as public safety with police and fire, and maybe having, uh, but the question that came up is, now we have all these directors and staff leaders. We redefine that position, and then it's like, well, are we gonna have to be reevaluating the, those directors and things, and, and seeing how that fits with the new division? Are we looking for new people in that case, or is it like reapplying for a new kind of structured job? I guess those are some of the questions we need to, to ask, and how we take those and move them into this type of, uh, diagram, or any of these types of diagrams. That's the question that came up. Chris?
I was just gonna say, I think, one of the reasons these are up in front of you tonight is to get some sense if the council is attracted to a particular model, or particular components of individual ones of these. How we get from where we are to what you might be attracted to is the next step, is sitting down and looking at, um, how do we get from where we are to where we want to be? How fast do you want to get there? Do you want to get there as people retire or depart through attrition, and when opportunities present themselves, we'll go that direction, and if it takes us a while to get there, that's acceptable? Or do you want to be there by a certain, you know, a date certain, you know, or as quickly as possible, or something like that? Then that's a different route from getting where we are to that point. But the first task, to some extent, is deciding, what do we want to look like? Then we can ask ourselves, how soon do we want to look like that? And how do we get from where we are to what it is that we want to look like?
Start with the end in mind.
What?
Start with the end in mind.
I, well, as I mentioned, I like the public safety idea, and, uh, I don't, you know, I'd have to hear more discussion about it from some of the, uh, you know, the chiefs and things like that, and how that would play. I like the idea of, uh, you know, bringing this to our new city administrator, and as people retire, we reshuffle some of them, so it's not, oh, you know, we're doing it all in one day kind of thing. That's my thoughts.
Chris, can you go to our current structure there? I mean, we know we need to, as a city, we know that we need to make some changes to this in the very near term, and just so everybody knows what a couple of those are, as, uh, as much as we all love Bruce, and would like him to stay here forever, um, there's no one that can replace him, or very, very few people that can replace him with a position such as public works director and city engineer. It, it's just a very difficult one to replace, as I understand. Am I okay saying that?
I would agree with that statement, from what I hear from my colleagues, who have set out to fill that type of position in today's job market.
And so, we know that's a tough one there that's coming up, um, in the near future, that will need to be, uh, handled. And so, there are multiple things like that in our current org structure, that just will not be viable in the next 18 to 36 months, wherever that leads us. And so, we need to have some structural shifts, and that's where we need to get council's direction, as to what type of shift do we want to see, what do we want it to look like in, uh, in our next phase? And I agree with you entirely, Matt, that we need to make sure to keep very much in focus as to how we, using technology and efficiently provide that customer service for our residents and businesses, and how the best way we can do that. I think that the s- org structure that we choose to go to, if we choose to go to something different, you were saying, working with staff and working with, for the residents, I think those are, in my head, those are one and the same. I, I think that those are both, what works best for our residents will work best for staff, and I think that we can get there fairly quickly.
I agree with the, uh, with Bruce's job, I've talked to Bruce about it, and I understand where that area is going, because nobody wants to take on that big of a job. Um, it's, it's too broad of a perspective, and, uh, people don't have the expertise to do it. But I think there, we're gonna end up adding one more document to the city administrator, because we're gonna split that into two jobs.
Well, not if we-
Not if we reorganize the whole thing. I mean, that, that's why I think we're sitting here tonight is, is you're telling us that with our current, um, population, that city administrator can't have those 10, 11 reports. I think that's where we're saying, that's the inefficiency of our model. And I think we have to look at how we're going to restructure that, to be more efficient in the customer service and to our residents. And not just look at this as, oh, as the people, but as the jobs.
Right. If I might, Dave said he was gonna let me tee it up, and then he got on a roll.
Sorry. Nobody can believe that happening, ever, right?
I mean, it somewhat depresses me, but you look at this chart and ask yourself, where we have vacancies right now? You know, our building official position, we're advertising for it, but, you know, we have a vacancy there. We talked about this position, you just set the official last date for this position. We're talking about where we want to go with IT. And when we originally talked about an IT director, we said, "Let's make him report directly to the city administrator, because that's important." They're all important, you know, and you keep elevating things up to be direct reports, and you just compound the challenge we have here. And if I might, and this is not a complaint, but if I might add, from my experience, just in the last six or seven weeks, what's not shown on here is the fact that the city administrator has five bosses. At, at a minimum, the five of you, to keep in the loop, and to understand your questions and your concerns, and make sure we, you follow up with that. And then there's scale, and the chamber, and, you know, all kinds of community groups. So, this just top-down look could be a full-time job, just taking care of this part. But there's all this out and up here, you know, that you could draw lines out of the city administrator position for. I would argue that with this many direct reports, you've created kind of a decision-making bottleneck, you know, and it's the worn spot in the door outside of the city administrator's office, because there's always a line there to get a moment of your time, a moment of your time. You know, I would encourage the council to look at something, you know, closer to this model, where you've got, you know, a couple of key people, really, they, they have to be on the same page as the city administrator, you know, high level of interaction with the council, but they can keep the cross-jurisdictional things related to these areas moving forward on a day-to-day basis, while that administrator works up and out. You know, and is focused on, on the up and out. Because trying to do all of that, this plus the up and out, that's a really, really tall order, and I think it's causing, it's not serving our organization well, I would say.
Chris, can you go back to the last slide? Okay. And, and I'm looking farther out, because the left side, where you've got development land infrastructure, that stuff, most of it, needs to be housed in the, in, in a location, instead of being multiple silos. Multiple silos don't work interconnectedly together, or they don't, and it doesn't work for the population. Likewise, for administration services. Most of them things are, are, well, administrative in nature. A- and they all work in a same silo, you know, it wa- it would, it wouldn't fit over here. These, these guys got the road graders and the shovels, and then people got the computers and a lot of stuff going on. They just don't mend, you know? But when you have all six of these on the left side, spread out multiple places, you're taking that connectivity away from, from it, and, and you're losing value, you're, you're losing a lot of value in, in, in doing that.
Well, let's not talk about-
It's not something that's gonna happen overnight. You know, we're supposed to talk about the end first. And so I'm, I'm starting at the end and working backward.
So how does this, so an organizational structure like this, what does anyone have any major concerns that this is something that is, that is not doable, that won't work in Shakopee? Or that this is something that could be worked into over time? I mean, we're not talking about this happening March first. What we're talking about, this is happening and putting an implementation plan into place. But if we're thinking ten years down the road, not about the physical location of everybody, but if we're thinking ten years down the road as to how we do business in the city, is this something that we could, is this kind, we're not gonna talk about the public safety and the nuance of it, but is this having centralized, uh, structures for each piece of our, our business, is that something we can work for? I mean, is that something we're gonna work toward? Is that the direction we want to go?
I think it's extremely unrealistic to expect somebody like myself to sit down at a table tonight and see something for the very first time and ask me to, uh, tell you whether I think this is a good idea or not without putting more than what thirty minutes worth of thought into it. I ask just unrealistic.
I'm not asking you to do that. I'm asking you to give ideas. What do you think? I'm not asking to make a decision.
Pick an option. We're just saying, is there one that you can? I mean, for me, I will just say, I would rather have the finance pulled out of administrative services. The sec- I think it was the second one. Yep.
And why is that?
I think it's just my corporate background. I mean, you always look at that finances as a separate, um, piece. You know, your CFO is usually one of your top three, so that's why I look at finances separate.
And I would be the opposite, because from a long-term, twenty years out or whatever, from a twenty-year-old standpoint, if you were gonna build a new building, I would put finance into the administrative side. But I'd still want them accessible to the city administrator. Right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick to it. You can't have two departments that work like this on opposite sides of town and expect them to be efficient.
This, this is organizational.
We all agree with you. Yeah.
Right. And once we figure out the organizational, then we can figure out the-
The organization doesn't function in separate silos. Sorry, it just doesn't. Not effectively, anyway. It does function, and that's what we have now, but is that the, the most efficient? Probably not. And, and I'm looking at actually sitting down, going through all of this, and trying to come up with my own organizational structure.
And I think Ms. Wilson talked really well about how, you know, the city administrator has all these other functions with the city council and all the other different aspects of the community. And to kind of pare down his, uh, direct reports, I think is important. And, uh, uh, where finance falls, I understand where your concern is there. I think, like, you know, Dave, uh, mentioned that the city administrator can go down a level anytime he wants. Where it's directly reporting to, um, a lot of these functions, you know, our, our budgets and things are, are something that's continually it, it's, they're not always the same, but it's, it's a regular process. It's, uh, it's, it's something that finance can generate, uh, a, a weekly, monthly basis like they do. Um, I don't see it as necessary as being a direct report, but, uh, I see where your concern is. And you mentioned, uh, I had mentioned earlier about police and fire being under one silo. You know, that's something we can move towards in the future, but, um-
And what would that look like? Yeah. Me too, 'cause it's like, what would it, how does it work?
A lot of cities have the Division of Public Safety that handles all emergency management and, and police and fire.
Yeah, maybe it'd be interviewing them and seeing how they function and-
I think you made a big assumption that the city administrator can go to any one of the people below him. That's if that department manager is, doesn't feel like he's being tread on. Some of those with that, you know, you, you've been there.
It, it's a cultural thing. You have to build trust.
The other thing I would like to point out, um, all the peripherals that would be above city administrator, the other things in the city has to deal with, I would like to see an overlay for the next time this is brought up, so that we've got a better idea of-
They're actually visually there on the page.
What all, what else is all on his plate?
We can do that.
What percentage of time that he would be, you know, doing that, you know, just, just a ballpark, you know, not, you know, just, you know, do they meet once a month? Do they?
I can try to provide that.
Chris had something she wanted to say first?
I'm gonna respectfully disagree with your comment that the city administrator can work with somebody in one of those further down boxes if the person in between them is okay with that. A, the city administrator is the boss, and they're everybody's boss. And if they say, I'm gonna work directly with human resources, and you're in that administrative services seat, you're not gonna step up and say, no. And we don't have a culture of that or a problem of that currently, you know? Today, human resources works directly with public works. They don't go up through their boss over the organization chart and back down. We just, we, we're a small enough organization, at least still, we don't work that way, and that's not been necessarily a problem, um, here. I would also suggest that the city administrators daily work with some of these divisions would ebb and flow. It's gonna depend on what the hot issues of the moment are, and you might go through a period where the city administrator is meeting with somebody, you know, your human resources director and maybe the administrative services director on a very regular basis, because we're doing something major. We're negotiating union contracts. We're rewriting the personnel handbook, something like that. You get that done, it might go, you know, a couple of months without really having a whole lot of direct contact, um, beyond the normal stuff. And the city administrator's focus might shift over to a different area, you know, where there's a hot topic or a big issue going on. So that it would ebb and flow, but you've still got those people that are the direct supervisors that keep things moving along on a daily basis and, and ensure the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, especially in areas where you have cross-departmental work on projects. We had talked a little bit about the challenge of finding a, um, person that might fill, um, Bruce's position of Public Works Director slash City Engineer. Um, I would argue, we've got that challenge in several areas. Um, in community development, when the day comes, you know, that Michael isn't our community development director anymore, that wouldn't be a position that I would relish trying to go out and find somebody that wants to oversee planning, you know, and, and the building official. Same thing with finance. In Ms. Linehan, we've had somebody that's been, you know, very, very capable of being the finance director and the city clerk. We may find that when we go out to hire our next finance director, and we may not, you know? So everything on this page is, is movable. You might leave finance out and move city clerk back into administrative services. So it's not just that one position where our traditional structure is likely to present a challenge for us as we face retirement and succession planning. I think we're faced with that challenge in a variety of places, that if we went out and tried to replace our existing, um, staff. The other note I would have is any structure like this one, um, or this one, the person that sits in this seat, in this seat, is most likely going to have come up through one of these disciplines, but not all of them. You know? Um, and that's just the nature, you know, of the structure. These people here are str- subject matter experts. They are experts in their field. They've got the degree, they've got the experience, or the license, or the certification, whatever it might be. These people here are probably gonna get there through expertise in one of these fields. But what they're gonna have to bring is the leadership and the management skill, the connection to the city administrator and the council on our vision and our priorities. That ability to balance competing areas of expertise as we work on, you know, cross-departmental things. That ability, Dave talked earlier about, um, instilling the culture and the value in developing people. That's really hard to find the time for when you're also designing a sanitary sewer project as the city engineer. Or you're reviewing, you know, a major redevelopment, you know, and doing the hands-on subject matter expert work. That's increasingly difficult. And what gets done is the day-to-day stuff that has to get done. And that work of leading our organization, instilling a particular culture in our organization gets put off until, hopefully I'll get to that tomorrow. Hopefully I'll get to that tomorrow. You know, that round to it that, that never comes around. Or, or doesn't come around to the extent that we, I won't say never, but doesn't come around to the extent that we would like it.
Dave?
J- I know I've talked a lot. My final thought on general principle, leave you with this short message is when, when you're, when you're paying for a new city administrator, the most effective ones, no matter what they are, focus on, I wrote down, um, five things. Strategy and goals, which is implementation of your vision, where you wanna go. Second, third, third is leadership. Fourth is council, and fifth is community. Council, community, leadership, strategy, and goals. That's what you want your administrator to do. But not to neglect, because day-to-day, I wrote down problem solve, coach, advise, and guide. As Chris talked about, they're gonna need to be in the weeds at times to help. Problem solve, coach, guide, but, but not make decisions. You know, and, and the generation of managers are changing. You know, that, they don't look like me anymore, you know, and, and they're coming up with different skills and different expectations, especially the younger generation. Uh, and they're looking for opportunities, and they don't wanna get in the weeds. They don't wanna design roads and approve variances. They wanna do bigger picture things. They wanna be involved, council, community, leadership, strategy, goals, big picture stuff. And those, and I'll close, are the most effective administrators. Because they're responsible for the day-to-day ultimately, but they're hiring people to do it. And so keep, keep that backdrop in mind. So what-
If you go back to that other slide that you just had there, the administrative services, now that person would most likely be the assistant city administrator, correct? That, in my book, that would be logical.
I think most likely, yes.
We'd have multiple assistant city administrators.
You could conceivably label both of these assistant city administrator. You know, that would be conceivable, um, because of the size of the department and, um, you know, so you could, you could look at having two assistants city administrators with different areas of expertise.
So what are the next steps on a project such as this?
Um, I think as, as Councilmember Lehman, um, indicated, to digest it. I know, um, this isn't something that you all think about on a regular basis. And so, give it some thought, um, mull it over, come to myself, or, and I can forward to Dave, you know, any questions that you might have. I guess the one other thing that I would add is, there might be a temptation to say, well, we're gonna just wait for the new city administrator before we tackle this. And that's, that's a, an option. I wanna give a little bit of my pitch why I think having some idea of where we might wanna go is helpful, and that is the things that Dave just listed off. You want your new city administrator building relationships, getting to know the community, all those types of things. To sort of come in here and say, well, we've got all these organizational issues, and we've left a bunch of them, and you've got acting city clerks enacting this and acting that in all these departments, 'cause we didn't wanna make any decisions until you get here. That's a bit problematic for starting that new city administrator off. So it's a fine line. I mean, I was an advocate for leaving the finance director position, you know, not filled on a permanent basis until the new administrator. So we've gotta try to find a line here where we've made enough decisions that the organization can keep moving forward. Um, and we aren't burning out, you know, our acting building official and our acting city clerk and these people that we're asking to take on other jobs or keep telling the IT staff, we'll get to a director soon, we'll get to it. We've gotta find that line we can walk, where we make some decisions now and we continue to make forward progress. Yet, we, um, don't preclude the opportunity for that new city administrator to be involved in building the team and so on. So the next steps, if council does come to a consensus that you like one of these enough that you wanna see more, you wanna know, you know, okay. So what does this look like? I, the easy one for me, I keep picking out, is engineering. If we're not doing a city engineer that's also the public works director, and we're just having a city engineer leading an engineering division, how big does that engineering division need to be? If they're led by a city engineer that's full-time focused on that division? And what does that cost in salary dollars? And you could apply that question to virtually any of the other boxes on the page. So if we can reach a point where council says, you know, we're really leaning this way, or, or, you know, the majority or the consensus is this way, we can go back and start to flesh out a little further down the organizational chart what some of this looks like, and quite honestly, what it costs. You know, we have a couple of new positions in this year's budget that I think we could look at, um, that aren't hundred percent solidly filled out, you know, that we have some opportunity to think about how we spend those salary dollars, and is that, you know, your number one priority and so forth. So I guess I would appreciate it if you'd all give it some thought, share with me your questions, concerns, observations. And hopefully, probably not for this length of a conversation, but maybe we can bring it back up as a shorter workshop item um, in a few meetings to get some group discussion on it.
And you're gonna send out the rest of them, PowerPoint, is that what we're missing?
It's these slides. They were in a separate file from the PowerPoint. I will-
And David, can you get us Apple valleys as well? Thank you.
All right. Any last thoughts or comments on this topic? All right. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate all your work.
Thanks. We'll be up all night. We'll be up all night.
Anything? Next item on the agenda is other business, item number ten, anything that we need to discuss? Councilman Lehman?
The, uh, one-on-one corridor from Rar Malting to, uh, Danger Fields. I think there's only two signs on that road, thirty-five by Rar, where, where you come in and it slows you down, speed limit. And then thirty-five by Danger Fields when you're coming into town. And I'm not sure there's any thirty signs on the whole thing.
I think there's one by Holiday, but I can't be positive. I thought there was one, but-
Since that's a county road.
Yeah. I know what you're talking about, though, because you think-
Well, they're, they're doing a speed trap for the last couple of weeks down there, and I gotta admit, there's a lot of people speeding.
Oh, yeah.
But I also look for signs, and I don't see many, so maybe we should ask Scott County to put a couple
Lori knows how many there-
Speed limit signs up.
No.
Or at least check and, and maybe put a couple of, uh, thirty mile an hour signs up, and then people will know.
Right. 'Cause I think people assume it's forty. That's my-
Right, right.
It feels like it could drive fifty on it.
Right.
They always pull him over right in front of his shop.
Mike?
Uh, I've got some concerns with the county on County Road Seventeen. We need to really put a bug in there here. That needs to be looked at this year.
Look at what?
Overlay.
The overlay, yeah.
It's pretty beat up.
First Avenue all the way up.
Oh, yeah, that.
They're aware.
They did to Tenth, right?
Yep, it is, yep. We already made that request, and I think they, uh, programmed money for that, too, didn't they?
Hold on, Bruce. I don't know if you're gonna make it all the way up here or not.
He's falling asleep. He's so overworked.
The county has indicated to me, as they will, it's programmed this coming year, and they would like to do nighttime paving, so that action, I will come to council. If you have any concerns. We think that'll work fine to do nighttime paving. It'll be at least, least amount of disruption.
You can also tell them that lights are really nice on Seventeen. The new lights?
Oh.
On marker and, uh-
On-
Marshall?
Marshall. You mean the new signal lights?
The new signals.
Yeah.
They're up and running.
Yep.
Mike?
Uh, what's the progress on the bridge? Are they on schedule?
On the what?
Bridge.
Oh, um, I told Jeff to check on that. I think they're a little bit behind schedule, but, uh, they can catch up.
Yeah, I noticed they've been increasing pretty good.
Anything like that.
There's a website, I think, check on it.
There's a website on there, too.
Put a camera up. They can do a time lapse and watch on it.
They've actually had a pretty good, um, bridge building season, so they were a little bit behind. I think they've been catching up, and I think talking to some of the people, I know that I think we'll get there.
Well, they didn't have the greatest start. I mean, that start was kinda rough. Uh, I mean-
Little flood.
Yeah, a little flood, just a touch. Um, anything else?
Do we have consensus on seeing if Scott County, I'll take a look how many signs are down there?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn to February seventeenth at seven PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to February seventeenth, twenty fifteen, at seven PM.
Senator Lou, any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
You're opposed? Passes unanimously, we are adjourned.